Good evening, residents of Everett, Washington. I would like to call to order this Everett City Council meeting of December 11th, 2024. For information on council meetings and how to participate, please visit everettwa.gov/citycouncil. For the record, Councilmember Fossey will be participating this evening meeting remotely. Well, Clerk, please take the role.
Mayor Franklin, here. Councilmember Toohey?
Here.
Councilmember Bader?
Here.
Councilmember Ryan?
Here.
Vice President Zarlingo?
Here.
Councilmember Vogel?
Here.
Councilmember Fossey?
Here.
President Schwab?
Here, thank you. It's working. At this time, I'd like to ask Councilmember Toohey to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, please rise.
Thank you, and this time I'd like to ask Councilmember Bader to read the Land Acknowledgement.
The City Council wishes to acknowledge the original inhabitants of this place, the Stahochia people and their successors, the Tlalip tribes. Since time immemorial, they have hunted, fished, gathered on and taken care of these lands and waters. We respect their sovereignty, their right to self-determination, and honor their sacred spiritual connection with land and water. We will strive to be honest about our past mistakes and bring about a future that includes their people, stories, and voices to form a more just and equitable society.
Thank you. If we have any presenters or public commenters on Zoom, if you could leave your video off and audio muted until we call upon you, thank you. As far as the agenda today, without objection, I'm going to remove or move item 18 and move it. We won't change the number, but we'll move it to after item nine. Okay, on to old business. Do I hear a motion for approval of the minutes for December 4th, 2024?
Councilmember Ryan, so moves.
Second.
Motion second is main. Clerk, please take the role.
Councilmember Toohey?
Yes.
Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey?
Yes.
President Schwab?
Yes. Well, good evening, Mayor.
Good evening, President Schwab, Council and community members. I welcomed leaders of our county to a legislative session kickoff hosted by Economic Alliance last week, and it was really great to hear the state priorities reflected in their conversation, which included childcare access, affordability, housing affordability, and workforce development, and a lot of other issues. I've also been having conversations with fellow mayors around the region on key public safety challenges, and I'm pleased that we've been working with a bipartisan group of our legislators in Olympia. We've had a couple of great meetings with them, and we'll be working with them in this coming session. I wanted to talk a little bit about the stadium that I know we're going to be hearing more about tonight. A couple weeks back, President Schwab, Vice President Zarlingo, and Councilmember Fossey and I attended a city-hosted informational event about the multipurpose stadium. And last week, my team and I attended the Aquasox hosted community meeting, also together with President Schwab and Councilmember Fossey. And tonight, this project will be briefed to the council, and we're going to dig into the site options. I'm really excited about this project because it's really a once-in-a-generation opportunity to make a significant economic investment in our community that is also a quality-of-life investment. Cities often make investments in big infrastructure projects, whether it's a new bridge, a park, a recreation amenity, or a city building. And these investments serve a purpose of serving our residents and hopefully improving our quality of life. However, it's not often we can make an infrastructure investment that has such a significant return on investment, not just for our community and quality of life, but also for our local economy. To fund this project, we are leveraging partnerships with planned, very significant contributions from the county, the state, the Aquasocks, other private partners, and funding sources. For our city's contribution, the funding sources for this project could include designated capital improvement dollars and bonding, but not city operational dollars. This is a complex topic, so I wanted to take a minute to talk about capital dollars. The city's capital improvement program, or CIP, funds are restricted and can only be used for permanent capital investments like building a new facility, renovating a building, or adding a park infrastructure. Capital funds cannot be used for operational costs like salaries, city services, or additional library hours. By choosing to pull these external resources in and combine them with our own capital investment in the near term, we'd start to see a return on investment almost immediately. During construction, this project will create skilled trade jobs, including apprenticeship opportunities. The stadium will be our second project that we would use a project labor agreement, following Reservoir 3 PLA, that's under negotiation now, which means we will have commitments by both labor and business for a successful construction process. I've already heard from members of our labor community that dollars invested in a project like this don't just disappear, they're reinvested into our community as materials are purchased and workers are paid. A facility like this also attracts new businesses and investments, bringing in more tourism, creating jobs, and generating additional new tax revenue, new revenue that then we can use for city operations and services. And with the downtown site, the United Soccer League is also interested in bringing men and women's soccer, professional soccer, to Everett, ensuring that this new facility would be generating revenue with a robust schedule on day one. So I know we're going to hear more about it tonight, but I really just want to thank our staff team, who've been working so hard on this for months and months and months, and also want to thank our consultants that we've been working for, want to thank the community for the critical questions, for the really great questions, for the comments and feedback that we've been receiving. Thank you for your engagement and passion about this project, and look forward to the rest of the briefing. No further comments tonight, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, it's time for public comments, which include written comment acknowledgement. Under our rules, written comments shall be considered in the same manner as oral comments, and the person submitting comments must provide their name and city of residence. So at this time, do we have any public or written comments?
Evening, President Schwab, we do. I'll first start with written comments. And the following submitted comments regarding Aquasox Stadium: Lexi Strong, Jackson Long, Tammy Dunn, Liz Stanning, James Siskel, Heinz and Carol Roy, David Hoagel, Sophie Dill, Trina Olson, Kuwong Davidson, Angela Miller, Richard Anderson, and Wilma Jones, which she also submitted comment about library hours. And these were submitted to council, legal, city clerk, and administration to be part of the record. So we have two people on Zoom that wish to speak and a few here in chambers. So we'll start with those on Zoom. And if Burna could please unmute, turn on your camera, and state your full name, city of residence, and you will have three minutes to speak. As soon as you see the clock on your screen, we can start.
Hello, my name is Burna Reineman. I live in Everett. I'm a disabled woman who lives in South Everett, and I did want to talk a little bit about the lack of funding for libraries and other daytime warming services in the city. I wanted everybody to kind of think a bit back to the windstorm that came through a few weeks ago, where many of us were without power for hours, if not days. I spoke with many of my neighbors whose homes were too cold to stay overnight without power. There are lots of us who live paycheck to paycheck and can't afford to buy generators to keep our power going, or live in rented homes, and just don't have places to go that are warm if another big weather event were to come through. And I don't know if that was necessarily a consideration with regards to library hours. And personally, my emergency plan was going to a warming shelter in event of another weather event. And I'm personally pretty disturbed that we are gutting the services that we do have in a time where we need to pull together and help each other. If we continue to defund our basic emergency infrastructure, where is that going to leave us when more disasters strike? We know our climate isn't getting better, and extreme weather events are likely to become more frequent. In addition, Everett does enforce regressive predatory no-sit-no-ly laws, which only hide the problem from plain sight and demonize the wrong people. These ordinances protect property over human lives and well-being. If our libraries, which are only daytime warming shelters, are no longer available on certain days of the week, where are our unhoused neighbors going to go? Do we really want to be a city that criminalizes and undermines the existence of our most vulnerable residents? Roughly half of unhoused people in the U.S. have a disability. I don't know if any of you are disabled, but it's hard enough trying to keep with a disabled body when you are housed. My life consists of medical visits, physical therapy, and bedrest. If I were to lose my housing, all of my medical issues would be exacerbated and untreated. And thanks to these no-sit-no-ly laws, I couldn't even have a lie-down on the sidewalk if I needed to. I know I am coming in late on this budget process, but I would urge the council to focus budget cuts where it will not hit our unhoused neighbors. I also think it is time to repeal these no-sit-no-ly ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, if Amy could please unmute and turn your camera on, and state your full name, city of residence, and you have three minutes to speak.
My name is Amy Heeb. I am a homeowner and a resident of the Riverside neighborhood for the last eight years. I'm also a non-practicing attorney and a member of the Washington State Bar Association in good standing. Late last Saturday night, an uninsured driver with a suspended license stole his girlfriend's car. While he was driving down 23rd Street, which I live on, he hopped the curb, drove more than 23 feet off the road, through sidewalk and landscaped side yard, through a road sign, knocking down part of a 70-year-old privacy hedge and a cemented fence post before coming to a stop on my neighbor's property. Everett Police Department responded to the incident, and officers on the scene refused to perform a breathalyzer on the driver because, and I quote, "There's no reason to suspect he's been drinking." Really? No reason to suspect impaired driving, aside from the significant property damage, potential for injuring bystanders, and patently reckless driving on residential streets. If the city's police decline to perform the most basic of their job duties in the face of egregious reasonable suspicion, how are police promoting public safety? City Council has approved budget increases for Everett Police Department of approximately 20% over the last two years, while slashing other essential community services like library, street repairs, and parks funding. According to The Herald, police department funding now consumes approximately 30% of the city's general fund, even while the city struggles to balance its budget as required by state law. City Council's budget priorities continue to make police funding a bigger and bigger piece of a smaller pie. According to the city of Vancouver, Washington, Everett has the single highest-staffed city police department relative to population in the state. That's for cities of 100,000 or more population. And that's before we get into the citizen volunteers that are driving around Everett in Everett Police Department branded vehicles. So why? I would like to leave City Council with two questions. Why does City Council approve the most aggressively-funded police force in the state of Washington when, in this instance at a minimum, those police are willfully negligent in their professional duties? And two, why should homeowners, like my neighbors and myself, invest in Everett when the city pours greater funding into ineffectual policing at the direct cost of funding community-building services? Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to those that are in chambers. So if Leo could please come to the podium and state your full name and city of residence, and you have three minutes to speak.
Lord, Everett. Who's going to talk about something else, but I'm not going to? This ain't the time or the place. Cousin of mine got terminally ill. He was a sheriff in the Midwest. I went to the funeral. There were a lot of people there. They run things different in the Dakotas and Montana as they do in, I'm going to say this, and I thought I'd never say it, the New Port Gardner. My proposal is change this name of Everett back to Port Gardner. The young boy that this town was named after, never seen the Pacific Northwest, never came there. He was at a party that his father... Everett was built on New York money. This building was built because of... 1933? Is that when it was built? Does anybody know? You guys are sitting there. 1933, this was built with... A lot of buildings were built on New York money. None of those people spent time here except for one person, James Hill, the Empire Builder. My family was in the fishing industry for years and years. There's no fishing fleet anymore. Everett, I hate to say this, I do not call Everett my home anymore. I'm about ready to pull stakes and move the hell out of here entirely. I thought I'd never say it, but I didn't. I've been here all my life. For instance, I asked somebody, they didn't know me from Adam, I said, "Where can I go get a suit?" They go, "Suit? Who wears a suit?" I go, "Forget it." Then I walked up to somebody else, I said, "Where can I go get a pair of jeans?" The Goodwill? Well, I don't shop at the Goodwill. I shop at Nordstrom's. Nordstrom's, 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 downtown Seattle. The flagship store, Nordstrom's. Nordstrom's never did come to Everett. Didn't want any part of Everett. I've been coming to City Council meetings 62 years, off and on, and... I don't know what you guys are going to do to fix it. It's unfixable. Thank you.
Thank you. So if Nali could please come to the podium? And please state your full name and city of residence, and you have three minutes to speak.
Nali McCartney Adesso, Everett. I'm speaking to you tonight as a member of this community, but also as a transgender man with a decade-long career in mental health. As you are probably aware, the LGBTQ community experiences housing instability and homelessness at a rate that far surpasses that of the general population. Transgender folks exist among the unhoused community at wildly disproportionate rates. Even worse, among transgender and gender non-conforming adults experiencing homelessness, 80% are completely unsheltered due to discriminatory policies and a general lack of appropriate housing. Over the years, serving my community, I have worked with transgender people who have been homeless and with transgender people for whom the specter of homelessness knocks constantly on their door, if not every day, then at the very least every month, as they struggle to pay the increasingly staggeringly high cost of rent. Those who have been unhoused already know intimately the risks having no shelter entails, the loss of safety, stability, dignity, health, freedom, even life itself. They already know, they are terrified of losing shelter again. But even those who have never yet been homeless know all too well how much they would lose along with the roof over their heads. And perhaps the most horrifying loss is the loss of their own humanity in the eyes of others. A person without shelter can become merely part of the scenery, frequently occupying the same physical spaces day after day, but rarely occupying any significant part of their community's attention. And when they do receive any attention from those who purportedly serve the community, the attention is often overwhelmingly negative and even hostile. It would appear that though this council and the mayor's office not only agrees with this attitude of indifference and hostility, it has gone further and made it their business to push the unhoused community even further into the margins, making it not only a crime to exist within certain areas of the city, but also criminalizing the compassion of other citizens who do not want to turn away. Mayor Franklin, I have attended Snohomish County's Pride in the Park event, an event at which you spoke in support of my community. I have to say, from where I stand, your words of support ring pretty hollow when you and this council are failing my unhoused siblings by passing and expanding the no-sit-no-ly zones in this city. LGBTQ folks deserve your compassion and support when we are freezing in the December cold just as much as when we are having a picnic in the park in June. We are horrified by the fact that as things get worse and worse for us socially and economically, this supposedly progressive city would rather give lip service to mental health and allyship than work to actually create the robust, robust social safety net we all need to survive. Tonight, I urge every member of this council to reject and repeal the no-sit-no-ly ordinance. I was present in this chamber last week and heard some of you say you would not have voted for it. So I challenge you, what are you going to do about it now? Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker would like to wait till we get to item number nine.
Thank you very much. Okay, on to council comments. Councilmember Toohey?
Thank you. Just a couple of things. I first want to thank everyone who took the time to send us letters concerning some of the issues that we're facing on our agenda in the next couple of weeks. Appreciate all that. I know it takes time, and I want to thank all those that came this evening to speak also to us. I did attend the Cultural Commission meeting last night. Or, I'm sorry, yes, last night. We had an update on the cultural programs for 2025. And just a reminder that Thursday is the volunteer appreciation reception at the Everett Station from 6:00 to 8:00. And I want to just personally thank all those that served the city on boards and commissions. We couldn't do it without you. We really appreciate it, and just want to thank them for their work. So then that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bader?
Thanks, Council President. No report, but do want to echo Councilmember Toohey's thanks to our board and commission members, and look forward to seeing them tomorrow night at that appreciation event. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ryan?
Great, thank you. Good evening, everybody. Thank you to our commenters tonight. I did want to follow up. Councilmember Toohey had requested an update on our sheltering options in the city several weeks ago, so just wanted to check in when we can expect an update.
I'm actually prepared tonight to share some information.
Fantastic. Do you happen to have information, too, about the situation at Faith Family Village?
No, I do not have that.
I might be able to help a little bit on that one. So after Lori speaks, I'll jump in on the sheltering program as well.
And then also wanted to invite everybody in the Port Gardner neighborhood to the holiday party and auction benefit coming up on Monday, December 16th, at Everett's fanciest new place, Marcel. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Zarlingo?
Well, in consideration of the multiple briefings we've got tonight, I'll keep mine very short, just to note that this afternoon, before this meeting, we had our Build Environment Council Committee meeting and a briefing by our planning director about the comprehensive plan update. Lots of complexity. It occupied the full hour, and we got through, I think, the first page of the briefings. We'll all individually and collectively be doing more of that because it means a lot for the city in terms of what we're doing in the next 20 years and implementing some of the state mandates and changes in housing patterns and the density that we're going to be experiencing here in the coming years. So for anybody who's interested in more of that, those meetings are recorded, available on YouTube on the City of Everett's YouTube channel, and of course, on the City of Everett's site. A lot of the documents are there, including the detailed zoning and planning maps. So I'd direct you to that and leave the rest of my comments for later.
Thank you. Councilmember Vogel?
Thank you. I like to call people by names, but I, not names, by their chosen name. I didn't catch the first person's name, so I'm just going to call you first person. So thank you for speaking tonight, Amy and Leo and Nali. And those were some really thought-provoking stories that you shared, and I'm really glad that you were here and shared them. I am actually, because of all of that, curious when... I know that Hope and Wellness has been told to close up shop, and so I'm wondering if there's a date on that. I haven't heard what it is. So I'd like to know maybe during the update of social services that we have in our city coming up. And other than that, just thank you very much for coming to speak tonight. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Fossey?
Thank you. I wanted to thank all the public for providing comment in writing as well as in person. And I believe I'm looking forward to the update on all of the cold-weather shelters and the day shelters and everything like that that I requested last week, and so I'm very happy to hear that you guys are going to provide them.
Thank you. I too appreciate the last week. Councilmembers, we got a lot of emails and appreciate everyone's participation. Also, thank you for the speakers. I wanted to thank our personnel director for providing extensive information. I'm starting to hear from our constituents some of the disappointment in the things as a city that we have to cut to balance our budget. We got a lot of correspondence over the park rangers and the ability to close the gates in time, and of course, the library hours. So it's disappointing to see. I know we all foreseen it, but now we're starting to feel it a bit more. On to administration. Lori Cummins?
Thank you. The request last week for information on the extreme weather shelter, I'll share a little bit of that tonight. Snohomish County partners with the city to provide overnight shelters in Everett during dangerously cold weathers. The cold weather season typically starts November 1st, when overnight temperatures are expected to be 34 degrees or lower. The two Everett cold-weather shelter locations are open. These shelters are operated by the Everett Gospel Mission, and they're located at the UCC Church, 2624 Rockefeller, and the Everett Family Cold Weather Shelter at 5126 South 2nd Avenue. We're still hoping to find a suitable location in South Everett for an additional cold water shelter. Youth between the ages of 2 and 17 who need shelter will be directed to the Cocoon House, and there's a phone number that I'll share where Cocoon House can be reached. It's 360-805-9282. The other cold-weather shelter locations in Snohomish County are Marysville, Monroe, Linwood, and Snohomish. One more update. Following the adoption of the 2025 budget, we are now implementing some changes to how we broadcast city meetings. We'll be streaming city meetings exclusively via YouTube beginning January 8th of 2025. I do want to note that these changes will not impact access to livestream, so for those already watching the meeting on YouTube, that won't change. As you can see, we started tonight making some changes to the room layout. Next week, we'll shift to using only one camera. If any community members need help accessing the meeting via YouTube, we encourage you to reach out to our communications team, and there's a generic email at communications@everettwa.gov. And as a reminder, lastly, for everyone, you can visit youtube.com/everettcity or everettwa.gov/live to access a live meeting or recordings of past meetings. And then the last, I did get a brief update that our code team is working with Hope and Wellness and their legal counsel on relocation with a February 2025 deadline. And so, Mayor, I don't know if you have anything else to add? Yeah, not on Hope and Wellness. That was the only update I have there. But I do want to just update on Faith Family Village and talk a little bit more about shelter options in the city and what we're doing to address homelessness and help those in need in our community. First Faith Family Village has been open almost a year now. That's one of our funded projects, or palette projects, for families experiencing homelessness that the city has supported. And it's a partnership with Interfaith, so that's where the funding goes, is to Interfaith. And as they've been open a year and they have new leadership, they're in negotiations of what are best steps for the project moving forward. So they're taking, I think, about a month break and renegotiating their memorandum with all their partners that they have there because they want to have a successful program in 2025. And so we hope that they'll be fully back up. But they've had a successful year, and we have every confidence that Interfaith, they've been a great partner for us for other projects that are going to continue to run a great program here. One of the projects that we support that they run is their safe parking. It's one of our homelessness initiatives that we've started in the last few years. To some of our commenters, everybody up here on the dais and our entire team of the city is quite passionate about helping those in need.
is quite passionate about helping those in need. Seven years ago, we didn't even have a community development team or a human services department in the city. We've actually invested a lot of energy in creating and expanding those programs and services. We have social workers, we're creating an alternative response team now that can be a different response than police that goes out to those that are experiencing a behavioral health crisis or some other level of crisis and a police or EMS response isn't warranted. We have funded three pallet shelter projects, expanding our shelter options for those experiencing homelessness. And we have just kicked off street medicine, so emergency mobile unit that goes out and provides treatment and medicine and a lot to folks in need in our community. And we have human needs grants that we give to our nonprofit partners that are doing great work and do what we can as a city to support those organizations. At the same time, we have to support the business community and the residents and, and address their issues of not feeling safe, having things broken into, not being able to access their building or having their building blocked by people in crisis. And so we balance all of that. But I can share that we have these no sit, no lies in areas where people have needed to access services and they haven't been able to access services without going through a sea of people using or human waste or, or things that are just not, make the people that are actually seeking shelter not feel safe. We also have areas that have a high, a high number of calls for service where, let's say there's people that are leaving their place of work and it's late at night and it's dark and they have called for 911 number of times because of the situation outside. What our police department does is they don't go in there and just arrest everybody. Typically, we connect our social workers with those folks in crisis on the streets and do our best to connect them to the variety of services. There isn't a perfect solution. I wish we had one. I wish there was more that the, that the state and the country was doing on this issue because we have a housing crisis and everybody deserves to have a roof over their head. And people living in our community and working in our community deserve to feel safe. And so I think we're making choices up here to try to invest our dollars in robust services to help people and also trying to be responsive to the business community and our residents and increase their sense of safety. So just wanted some of you to be aware of some of the other programs that we are supporting. And thank you all very much for the comments this evening. I don't have anything else on shelter.
Okay, or on council comments?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, absolutely. Councilmember Vogli.
Back to the YouTube change, is Granicus still going to be a thing or is that off the table now? It's my, my, yes, Granicus will still be available. I'm watching PIPA shake her head, yes.
Oh, she's blocked. Okay. Thank goodness because that is how I go back and look for all of the different things that I've ever needed from these meetings. And you can use it too. I don't know how YouTube works, so. And then just a reminder that homeless people aren't inherently dangerous. Thank you.
Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you. For libraries, I'm also concerned about both libraries being closed for, on the same days and especially if there is a cold weather event, that's, those are the only daytime warming centers in Everett for people to go. And we've also just been getting, council's been getting a lot of questions about why the library stacked the two, both closures on the same days instead of spreading them out. So I think it would be helpful for council to have a better justification of that and so we can share with constituents and just for the community to know as well.
We'd be happy to share that back with the library board and the library director and ask for some context around the decision to stack those days off. I know there was some consideration for staffing levels and consistent operations and the ability to move one team to the other library when they have absences, but I'll get some additional information for you. Thank you.
And Councilmember Fossey, did I see your hand?
Yes, thank you. I had a couple of follow-up questions to the shelter information. There was two locations that were mentioned. What are the hours?
I don't have the hours listed here, so I'd be happy to share that with you.
Cold weather shelters are usually just at overnight. They're, I don't know what the hours are either, but it's like after dark or something. They're, they're not all day, they're not 24/7 sadly.
Okay. And, and we don't have any daytime shelters available for the cold then?
No, the only, the only warming shelters are libraries. I think malls are listed as warming shelters and I'm not sure. The Snohomish County is in charge of cold weather shelters and so it's all run through the Snohomish County. I'm not sure what's all on their list.
Okay, thank you. Would?
I have more questions.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, it's hard to have, you know, you're on the video.
Yes, yes. I would love to see if the city could get an update from Snohomish County so we can share that publicly so that the public knows, maybe our next meeting. That would be very helpful information to have. And then are those, I guess, all gender? Are they for families?
I believe so, but again, it's run through, through Snohomish County. They have all of the human service programs. We just have our small human service department because the funding for those types of services goes to Snohomish County, not cities. But we will get an update from Snohomish County.
Great. And then the two through 17 shelter, Cocoon House, is that for families or children alone?
Youth.
Okay, so.
I think it's up to age 21. I'm not sure.
My understanding is age 17. I did get an update, the magic of technology, in terms of the cold water shelters at the UCC of United Church of Christ, 2624 Rockefeller, their intake times are 8:00 PM and then they, their intake closes at 10:00 PM. Everett Family Cold Weather Shelter, woman, it's a women's and children's shelter. That's the one that's at 5126 South Second Avenue. The intake times open at four and intake time closes at 8:00 PM.
So what, and what is the vacancy like? How much room? I'm just curious if we're going to have enough and if we need to do some advocacy at Snohomish County level. I don't know what the vacancy was last year, how many slots are open or do we have enough available? I'm just concerned about our neighbors, given that we don't have daytime shelter really available.
I would say there's never enough available. So I believe that Julie has been working with Snohomish County, so Julie Willey is our community development director. She has been working with Snohomish County for, since cold weather shelters last year, trying to ensure that we have a robust plan for this year. They've been working to identify additional locations. It is always a challenge to find locations, churches or partners that are willing to operate the, the cold weather shelters. It's, it's just a challenge. And so our staff has been focused on it. Again, I think having the county here or Julie Willey here to give a, as robust a update as possible next week, happy to try to organize something.
I would love that. Thank you so much.
Okay, do we have any more questions for admin? Councilmember Vogli.
I just wanted to add that Esther's Place is a day center for women, all women, that includes transgender women. And that's at 3705 Broadway, very close to our current Funko Field. Monday through Friday, like I said, there is breakfast, there is lunch, there are showers. And I know that there's not enough parking because I know at least four ladies there that try to find parking and they're also not dangerous. But there is nowhere to go, even with the minimal amount of services that we have in the city. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is that all for admin? Okay, thank you very much. Our city assistant cert attorney, David Ramsey. I'm sorry, Ramsey Rammerman, sorry.
Something like that.
Yeah, it was a mixture. You guys just worked together, so hand in hand.
I have no comment and no executive session tonight.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, so we are on to our consent items. We have seven consent items, one through seven. Do I hear a motion?
Councilmember Ryan moves approval of consent agenda items one through seven.
Seconded.
Okay, motion and second made. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Tuie?
Yes.
Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogli?
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey?
Yes.
President Schwab?
Yes. Okay, moving on to item number eight, proposed action item. It is Council Bill 241140, second reading, adopter ordinance closing a special improvement project entitled Fleming Street Bicycle Corridor Fund 303, Program 124. The final reading is December 18th. Do I have any questions? Okay, moving on to item number nine. We have a briefing. It's our Everett Outdoor Multipurpose Facility Location Selection. And Lori, we'll start with you on the introductions.
Yes, we have Scott Patterson here to, to kick off the briefing and, and then he'll be referring to our consultant as well to, to provide some updates on site selection.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Mayor Franklin, President Schwab, council members, Scott Patterson's staff. In January of this year, you, the city council, and Mayor Franklin created the Stadium Fiscal Advisory Committee, a committee made up of, of nine members from our community. And we often refer to the Stadium Fiscal Advisory as the FAC, so tonight you'll hear a lot about the FAC. But first of all, I, I want to recognize not only the nine members of the community that participated in this, but the six elected officials and the one business owner. This group met 12 times over the course of the last nine months, put a lot of work into this FAC report that you've since received. And I, in the, the mood of thanking all our boards and commissions, I feel like it's my, my privilege to individually recognize the committee that I worked hand in hand with. So if you'll allow me the time to recognize them in no particular order. Fred Sastrum was the chair of the committee, Erica Diaz, who actually is in the audience tonight, Tom Hoban, Bob Boerjack, Dan Murphy, Ethan Coffey, Maury Troutman, Hayley Statzma, who's now actually Hayley Larson, you know, nine months, lots of things change. And then Dan Leach, who is our vice chair. The elected officials that participated in this as an advisory role, county council member Megan Dunn, Caroline Mason, Everett School Board, the business owner Chad Volpe, the owner of the Everett Aqua Sox, as you will, no, Brian Sullivan, Snohomish County Treasurer, Julio Cortez, State Representative, council member Mary Fossey, representing herself, or representing her district as a state representative, not as a council member. And last but certainly not least, President Schwab. Again, I want to thank these people in this group for helping take us through this process.
Just a, just a quick correction, I believe, Councilmember Fossey was actually there as a council member, not as a state representative. That Julio was the state representative, she was there as a council member, sorry.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. You'd think that I would have known that after 12 meetings in nine months. So thank you again. Tonight, we have a short briefing for you in preparation for next week, when you'll have the opportunity to vote to secure the Everett Aqua Sox in our community. You'll be faced with two choices. Do you want to remodel the school district site? Or do you want to build a new downtown stadium with the potential of adding men's and women's professional soccer to Everett and keeping our beloved Everett Aqua Sox in Everett? And actually, in reality, you do have a third choice that I wished I wasn't going to discuss, but I will bring it up. You can take no action. By taking no action, I can 100% guarantee you that we will not have a new partner in the USL and we will lose our beloved Aqua Sox. So tonight, we prepared a briefing for you in preparation for the vote that's in front of you next week. And clearly, we're here to answer every question we can and get through this process together. So without further ado, I'll get Ben Franz from SOJ up here and we'll get going through this PowerPoint presentation. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you, Scott. Council President, council members, Mayor, it's great to see you this evening. As I sit in the audience, I'm struck by the import of the work that you do every day and how important it is for you to balance the delivery of critical services on a daily basis and also leading forward with a vision for your city and how to invest in the future. So I'm pleased to share the work that's been underway over the last few months. A little update on the project, summary of the work for the Fiscal Advisory Committee and some of the background around site selection. All of this designed to equip you with the best resources to make the most informed decision you can for the City of Everett, for the citizens and, and for your future. I will do my best to keep this short. There is a lot of information we want to share with you tonight, so I will go fast, but I'll also be deliberate in this because I think it's important for, not only for you to have this, but also for the public to understand all the information that you are making decisions with. Over the last few months, we've done a lot on the, on the front with the Progressive Design Build Teams. We've narrowed that down to three teams. I'm pleased to report this is an outstanding time to be out to market. We are seeing an incredibly strong response, some of the best teams from across the country and locally coming forward and bringing their best people to help you deliver on the vision. We finalized the EIS, that FEIS has been published, so people can find that on your website. We've also provided a number of opportunities for the public to engage, ask questions and learn more about this project. And lastly, the Fiscal Advisory Committee has completed their initial work over many meetings and delivered to you some initial recommendations. Just a summary of the timeline, we keep shifting forward here. This is a big month for you. Before you, in just under a week, will be a decision around site selection, other activities underway, as I said. We're narrowing the field for the Progressive Design Build Team and we're continuing preliminary lease negotiations with our potential partners for either Funko Field or the downtown site. And the downtown site, that would include two potential partners, the Aqua Sox and a new United Soccer League team, men's and women's team. In January, you'll have the opportunity to consider a recommendation for Progressive Design Build Team and that would kick off the design process, but we'll focus here in December on the site selection. The FAC engaged in a robust process over the last months and was really grounded by a number of guiding principles that I think are really important. The first one, recommendation and a guiding principle to right-size the initial phase to meet your current funding. Right? That's a pragmatic statement, but also a reality. You can't stretch beyond your means. You only, and the City of Everett have so much funding available, so right-size the project. And we're fortunate, we have the tools that are in motion here that allow us to do so. Maximize private investment. So that's looking to both the two potential private partners in the Aqua Sox and the USL as well as potential private partners elsewhere in the community. Leverage that to its maximum percent, potential. And the third one, limit the funding to bonds backed by revenue from renovated or a new stadium and existing capital funds. At this time, the Fiscal Advisory Committee is not recommending any new levies, local improvement districts, or tax increases to fund the project. The committee reviewed over 22 potential funding sources and there's about a 14-page report and a number of appendices. I encourage all of you to read that. If you have questions, you want the Cliff Notes, doing our best to give that to you today, but also encourage the public to take a look at that. That's your fellow citizens rolling up their sleeves on a volunteer basis over many months to give their best recommendation to this council. They identified a number of funding sources consistent with those principles. City of Everett uncommitted capital funds, City of Everett bonds backed by net revenue from the stadium, I'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment, state funding, and that will include multiple requests. We have $7.5 million today. The committee recommends going back to the state. This is a project that not only serves the City of Everett, but the entire region, so there's benefit and value in going back to the state again. Snohomish County, also encouraging you to go back to Snohomish County as a partner and seek additional funding. Private partners through the Aqua Sox and the USL and any others that may step forward to be a partner in this project. And federal funding. A note on the federal funding though, this is as available, it's got to be a fit for the project and it needs to be a decent amount of funding. A little bit of federal funding can create a huge administrative burden and reporting burden for you and the project. So the committee talked about this a fair bit, encourages seeking federal funding, but make sure that it's a sufficient amount that you're more than covering the cost of actually receiving those funds. I want to dive into the detail of some of those initial recommendations. The committee wrestled a lot with the value of both sites, and really tried to be as objective as possible in coming forward with this recommendation, but did come to the conclusion that the downtown site, long-term and in the near-term, is the most fiscally beneficial option for the city. There were a couple of factors that they discussed. One, and we've talked about this before, the school district owns the Funko Field site. The city would never control that site. You'd have limited opportunities for revenue, and so there's limited return on that investment. The potential funding sources are also quite a bit lower and far more fixed for Funko Field than they are for the downtown site. I mentioned this already, but the importance of right-sizing this project. So Fiscal Advisory Committee has identified an initial set of potential funding sources. That's not an unlimited source of funding. So they really encourage you to right-size that project, and I'll talk a little bit more in a moment how we can do that with the progressive design-build process. That's the perfect tool to drive an architect and a contractor simultaneously to achieve the best possible budget. Another opportunity that the committee identified is the potential to phase this project. Limited potential to phase this project at Funko Field, you have more flexibility to deliver a phased project at the downtown site. Maximize private investment. This includes the two potential private partners in the Aqua Sox and USL, as well as thinking creatively about what can happen in the future adjacent to the downtown site. First and foremost, we focus on delivery of the stadium. We believe there's potential to catalyze investment and economic development throughout downtown, and the committee certainly encourages the council to be open to those opportunities in the future. I believe Scott mentioned this, but the USL would only be able to invest and be a partner in the downtown site. There's just not the physical space at Funko Field to accommodate a baseball field and a soccer field. Limit the funding sources to current revenue and existing capital funds. So again, the committee is not recommending new levies, local improvement districts, or taxes at this time. And they also noted that based on the commitments we already have from the state and the county, that additional funding from the city would be matched more than $7 with that private investment from the two partners, every dollar to $7, private investment, the county and state investment. So a pretty good return on that initial investment by the city. This one is really important. There's a significant amount of funding projected from the issuance of bonds backed by net revenue that comes out of the stadium. And the Fiscal Advisory Committee really wanted to emphasize, and does so in their report, that it's important that you live within the means of those net revenue projections, and that be based on the most complete and final projections. So there's still a fair bit of work to be done. What you see in that report are some initial projections. We have multiple financing experts that the city's brought on board to help refine those and equip you with the best information ultimately to size that bond issue based on those net revenues. And that, to the greatest extent possible, those bonds be fully serviced by the net revenues from the stadium. This point I mentioned already, really lean into the progressive design-build process. This is a process that will allow you right out of the gate, assuming you make a selection in January. Again, outstanding teams from across the country and around the region that have responded to the call, that once that selection is made, you challenge them with the budget and schedule that's before us that are the reality. And this is the best possible tool we have, with a contractor aligned with an architect to drive a design that meets our needs, our budget, and our schedule. Committee also recommends that the city advance the project prudently but expeditiously. We all know that we're under a very tight timeline, given the requirements that Major League Baseball has imposed on the Aqua Sox, and that certainly presents challenges, but also opportunities. Moving swiftly will allow us to manage any cost escalation. That can be a significant challenge for large-scale projects that take many years in planning. And also, moving expeditiously minimizes the risk that MLB may force the Aqua Sox to leave the city, and provides that path, still keeps that open for us to provide a facility that meets the MLB requirements by April of 2027. I want to shift now, and again tonight, we're happy to take questions from you. Lots of information, but I think important background to support what'll be an important decision before you next week. I want to shift and talk a little bit about the two sites. And there are several slides later that also talk about the third alternative, which is do nothing, and that's certainly an option. I think everybody's familiar with the Funko Field site. This would be a significant remodel, where the city would be investing millions of dollars in a facility that you don't own, but certainly be an option to retain the Aqua Sox. The other alternative is a downtown site. What was studied in the EIS is a site from Pacific to Hewitt, Broadway to the train tracks that would accommodate a new baseball field, soccer field, and present some potential for other development in the future, once that facility was completed. Couple of charts here that show at a high level the comparison between the three options. At the school district site, you have ongoing scheduling conflicts. Appropriately, the first priority is for student athletes and their games. The second priority, the Aqua Sox, and the third priority, some capacity for ancillary events. At the downtown site, you don't have any of those conflicts. There's been in-depth discussions already with the USL and the Aqua Sox around how their schedules could work quite compatibly. Interestingly, the Aqua Sox MLB schedule comes out first, and the USL would have the ability to actually schedule around that right from the go. So those conflicts would be fairly minimal. Of course, in the no-action alternative, if you were not to advance a project, you wouldn't have any scheduling conflicts. That would be resolved. The potential for public open space, this has been a priority of the council, and I know for the project team from the beginning, there is not a whole lot of potential for additional public open space at the Funko Field site. There certainly is at the downtown site. Potential to make stronger connections to downtown from the transit district, and actually include some public park-like space. Certainly, in the no-action alternative, there's not an opportunity there. Benefits to surrounding businesses, there's been a number of economic studies to date that show increased potential economic benefit for the downtown site. You would see some modest increase for the Funko Field renovation, but far more potential with the downtown site. And if you took no action, it would actually be a loss to the city and overall economic activity. Last thing, just impacts to the Aqua Sox and the school district facility uses. This is a little bit redundant to the schedule conflicts. That continues to be an ongoing challenge with Funko Field. That is certainly resolved with the downtown site. Just a couple of additional considerations for all of you in this. School district site, Funko Field, and the downtown site, we can meet the MLB requirements. It is a little more challenging just space-wise at Funko Field, but it's certainly possible. We've done enough study to know that that's achievable, and we know for sure that we can do that with the downtown site. Additional events, there's the capacity to do some concerts at the Funko Field site, but that would still be fairly limited. The downtown site with a new facility, you'd have far more ability to have additional events in that space. And then certainly on the soccer front, not possible at Funko Field, so that's a potential partner that we would not be able to secure here in the city of Everett. But at the downtown site, we know that we could accommodate both baseball and professional soccer. And then expanded potential for community use with the downtown site, you would have two stadiums. And so the potential there to increase Everett as a destination for tournaments, and also accommodate college, adult, and youth activities. Parking is a favorite topic on everybody's mind. I know we've all watched, probably a little sheepishly, what's happened in Linwood with the arrival of light rail and suddenly a scarcity of parking. We all think about mass transit as solving our parking challenges. Unless you're the point of departure and arrival, we still need adequate parking. Far more parking available already around the downtown site. Of course, that would carefully need to be coordinated with activities at Angel of the Winds Arena. There's a certain amount of complementary seasonality to hockey and baseball and soccer, but other events throughout the year would need to be carefully coordinated. And the downtown site also has capacity to build additional parking. That would likely be a future phase of the project, but there's certainly space on that site that you could accommodate more parking in the downtown site. The next steps before you, certainly an important decision, one of many. I wish I could tell you this is the only decision you'll have to make on this project, but over time, there'll be multiple decisions. On December 18th will be to approve a preferred site selection for the stadium, and then in early 2025, approval of that recommendation for initial contract with the progressive design-build team. We've had a fair bit of discussion early on, sort of questions about the off-ramps on this project. So here's a graphic that shows you some of the key decisions you'll be potentially making over the course of the next year. So this month is site selection, in early 2025 is selection of that progressive design-build team, later on in 2025 is the potential acquisition of properties, starting the permitting process, finalizing the funding. In 2026 and into 2027 would potentially be under construction, all with the goal to deliver a field that meets MLB requirements by April of 2027. At each one of these points, you, as a leadership body, will have key decisions, the go, no-go for the project. So this month reflects a very important decision, and it will be followed by more. And each step of the way, we will all have more information, more confidence, to the point where you go, this is a project that's ready to go. You'll approve a construction contract, and we'll start to build. With that, I'll pause, and happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. I'm sure probably several you have. Who would like to go first? Could I start down the line here? Councilman? Oh, do we have public comment on this item first? Okay, thanks for the reminder. You get to sit and rest for a minute.
So if Mason could please come to the podium? And please state your full name and city of residence, and you have three minutes to speak.
Mason Rutledge, Everett, Washington, and this is a slam dunk, a wrong spurt, a home run, whatever you say. And the thing is, you already have a proven model right over there in the Everett Event Center, Angel of the Winds Arena. Our family moved to Everett. I'm a South Snohomish County-raised kid. My parents owned a restaurant in Linwood. We have investment properties in Edmonds. I now work with business owners across the United States. In fact, last week, I was in Fort Wayne, Indiana, that has a team the same level of ours, in a town about the same size of ours, and their stadium is decorated for the holidays, and the national news is putting it on TV because it is so cool, and they're selling tickets. It's not on the, it's another idea for, another way to use it, is off-season like that. We have a proven model right here. The day we moved to town was December 16th, 2003, moving up north. And on that day, as we drove down I-5 coming into town, they made the announcement that Everett was a location for the 777 program. It was kind of a fun day to move into town. And then we drove through downtown, and the Everett Event Center, as it was called back then, was sitting on the property that my dad grew up on as a child. His house had gone down, and I wasn't sad about it. I didn't know what was going to go on. It was the Silver Tips' first season. We soon realized that that'd be a place of pride, where my family and I could bike to, walk to, enjoy games, have dinner beforehand, go to graduations. We've had more memories in that building. Think about the memories that are going to be made during concerts, walks in the park, daughters with their dads catching balls in the outfield, players coming up, soccer games happening. I didn't even know that was a possibility. So I'm excited about the city of Everett. I think we're on the upswing. My office is in New York City, and I tell people in New York City, I live in Everett, Washington. I don't say I live in Seattle. I live in Everett, and everybody knows us because of Boeing, and because we are a great logging town that for generations has made the right decisions, even when it means investments. And the thing I'd say is, I love the idea of this being right-sized. That wasn't in my notes. We have investment properties in Edmonds, and we always right-size our projects. It's the way to do things today. And I also love that we're thinking creatively about private funding. There's a lot of money in the world, and people want to invest in good projects in good places. This is a good project and a good place. So I just recommend to the city council to swing away. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that concludes our public comments.
Okay, we don't have anyone else? I'll open up if someone here, before I select you. I'll just open it up. Is anyone else interested? Okay, go ahead. Make this fair, you know. You need, could you tell us your name and what city you live in, and you have three minutes?
I'm Grant Harrington. I live in Everett, Jefferson Elementary, Evergreen Middle School, Cascade High School. I own Snohomish Running Company. My family had Everett Chevrolet at a point in time. On the surface, this looks like, should be a slam dunk. It should. I mean, a lot of people think. But I have some huge, huge concerns. I grew up in Everett when I saw Memorial Stadium full. That's a 12,000-person facility already, okay? I haven't heard enough about what the impact is on the school district to this if they move away from Funko Field. At the end of the day, I know we talked about private money. I know we're talking about a lot of, you know, but at the end of the day, it's going to be tax dollars. And if you drive up and down Broadway, we, Everett has a 48% owner-occupied homeownership residence, and we're going to spend $120 million on a stadium? Can we not spend some of that money to try to drive long-term jobs? Can we use it? I also have just some, now we're going to bring in this whole new stadium, and what people aren't saying is these events are going to compete with events from the arena. It's going to compete with events from Funko Field. What is the lost revenue to the school district? Half our schools are falling apart. Like, and we're putting in all this time and this money and this energy to try to find a way to build 120, it's going to end up being $150 million at the end of the day, right? What are we doing? Are we putting in that same amount of effort and time to try to work with the school district to build a new high school? I mean, we've got enough portables out there at some of these high schools to last a lifetime, yet we're building a $150 million stadium down here? And we're slamming it through. It's like at 100 miles an hour, right? It's like, and I just, I feel like we don't really know what the long-term ramifications of it are. And we're trying to slam it through so fast, and I'm sorry, but next year's an election year. What happens if you don't win? And then the next person after you, and it doesn't come out, and the revenues don't come out the way it is? What if we hit a recession, right? Like, these are all things, I wish that we can maybe slow down a little bit here. I also wish that some of the time and the energy, because yes, we're finding the money, but what else could that money be used for to drive revenue to the city? I mean, we're not exactly rolling in the dough here. So I'd like to see what the opportunity cost is. Are there other things that we could use this money for that would drive more jobs, more owner-occupied residences? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, would there, once again, anyone in the audience want to speak at this point? Okay, last chance, anyone else? That is, want to keep it coming? Okay, sure. Yeah, I'll offer that to you. Your name and city of residence, you have three minutes. Anyone else, last chance? Okay.
Hi, folks. My name is Gary Vallah. I live in Everett now. I'm a recent transplant from Rapid City, South Dakota. Moved here in 1973, when this was a small town. Rapid City was about 60,000, Everett was about 60,000. Now this town is what, 104,000, how much? 115,000? Cosmopolitan, huh? Do we want to be, remain a cosmopolitan city, or do we want to be a small cowtown? We need this stadium. There's tons of people. There's tons of people in these outlying areas. I set up events for the Aquasocks and the Silvertips. I got people coming down from Mount Vernon to attend these games. It'll pay for itself. The guy mentioned outdoor concerts. Sounds like a great idea. Remember what they did in Shea Stadium when the Beatles came in? Soccer, you see with the Sounders? They what, have 100,000 people show up every game? So I think, I think the stadium would be a good fit, and I believe that there's enough people in the surrounding counties that would fill that stadium all the time. I just want to know one thing. Does anybody know, know or have Elon Musk's phone number? You want private funding? There you go. And one last thing, I want to say the Everett Police Department is one of the finest police departments I've ever seen, and I back the blue. You guys are great. Okay? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. Okay, so we'll move on to council questions for our consultant. All right, well, yeah, we go down the horn. Julia, you ready now, or?
Yeah, I guess so.
We can just go around once, and we'll go back at any time.
So I guess my first comment is, I was kind of surprised there aren't numbers in this presentation tonight. You know, it's the first time you've come to council with the funding mechanisms, but I assume we'd be talking pricing too. And so, you know, I have other memos with numbers and everything, but to me, I'm not sure it feels official. So I'm really curious about that, obviously. And then, who did the cost analysis for the projects, for either, for both of them?
Great questions, council members. So the fiscal advisory committee recommendation includes a fair bit of detail around cost. So that 14-page report plus the appendices, I can give you kind of a high level, what those numbers look like. For the Funko Field site, you're looking at, you know, 75 to 80 million dollars in potential capital cost all in, and you're looking at potential funding sources around, you know, 32 to 37 million for that project. So fairly significant potential shortfall. For the downtown site, you're looking anywhere from, you know, 100 to 120 million all in. That includes property acquisition costs and potential funding sources, right around 70 million up to about 90 or 95 million, depending on how your negotiations go with your potential partners, and ultimately what the net revenue projections are that come from the stadium. So, and sort of round numbers. Both projects, both options have a gap in funding. Fiscal advisory committee and their recommendation believes you have a much stronger chance of closing that gap and far more opportunities to do so with the downtown site. And leaning into that progressive design-build process, you start that team off with the funding you have, and their first challenge is to deliver you a project that meets that budget and schedule. So some of the numbers, again, the detail is in that report, and happy to go through that at any time with you. And if there's additional briefing that you'd want outside of this meeting, happy to do so.
I just think it would be good for the public to see those numbers as we're talking about this and making decisions. So I was just kind of surprised it wasn't in here. And then who did those cost analysis?
Excellent question. So the Aquasocks actually commissioned cost studies for both renovated Funko Field and a new downtown site, and they did some preliminary, very preliminary, design work with a local firm to support that cost estimating. And then, we looked at a number of comparable stadium deals and operating expenses across the country. The Aquasocks were a great partner in that, so that we could develop what is an initial model for operating expenses for the new stadium, and then potential revenue models. There's more work to be done on that front. In fact, we've recently engaged a sports finance expert that has a long history of delivering successful public-private stadium projects, and they're just starting their work to review those financial models as our negotiations with our potential partners progress. So there's still more work to be done, but that's how the base models are, were developed that are in that report.
Okay. Okay, and then, at an early point, we did see some economic impact numbers. Are those the same as they were? I mean, it was one of the first reports that I think Dan did.
I'll turn to Dan to address that.
The economic impact study that was done initially was updated earlier this year, and that update examined the two-site selections specifically. We haven't updated that with the addition of USL. What that second update showed were two different ranges, kind of a high and a low range of potential. What the USL does is pretty much guarantee the high range, and so we haven't seen the need to spend more money at this time to update that study, because it is quite current and accurate through the most recent year of development. It doesn't reflect the current Aquasock season, the 2024. It would go through 2023, and the Angel of the Winds Arena, 2023, 24.
Can you remind me, that wasn't, that wasn't done by you? That was done by outside?
That was done, yeah, thank you for.
Community attributes or?
Community attributes did that study. And the short summary version is that the downtown site has at least twice the amount of economic activity generated for the community as does the school district site.
If you can send those charts back out, would be great.
I'd be happy to do that. They're also on our website, as is all the different things, and it's just labeled as economic impact for anyone who might be looking for those themselves.
Great. And then I had a question on the parking. Does this, the parking that was at 2600 for the downtown, are those existing, or is part of this going to have new parking available?
Those are all direct from the EIS, so those are existing parking numbers. And as I mentioned, the downtown site would have the potential for you to add additional parking, but I think that would likely be a future phase.
And so have we seen how this meshes in with our parking study that we did a few years ago? I don't know if anybody has looked at that to see if there's anything that is a red flag from that.
Well, both the, a large part of the SEPA EIS process was devoted to parking impacts, and I should really summarize all of the EIS findings. The reason I think that Ben probably didn't mention is they're, they're not particularly exciting. In the downtown site, environmental noise, glare, light, traffic, and parking impacts all were basically like present. There was no significant increase or decrease. The only increases or decreases that were available were at the existing school district site. When you remodel it, you're going to put new lighting in, and that actually is going to reduce the light impact on the neighborhood. They speculated, and of course, with a no action, we'd improve parking and traffic in that area around the school district site. And so those were the main findings from the EIS. Now, as far as the parking study that you're referring to, which was done really for looking at the, how for the business community you could improve parking, one of the elements was that, was for event parking, and the arena is really the big driver of that. An Aquasocks game, the average attendance, we estimate, is around 2,500. Silvertips are twice that, more like 5,000. And so the arena, when it has a full concert, Backstreet Boys come to mind, because I remember it was kind of crazy all over town. That was 10,000. And so the arena has much more potential to strain the parking limits. And so in the study of the parking consultants, the arena was more the driver than, than the stadium, and that was what the EIS found as well. Now, what is definitely the main recommendation coming out of both the 2016 and the 2023 parking studies is paid-on-street parking is something the city and the business community should really consider, and we agree that that would help a lot of things, like the restaurant owner who's parking in front of their, like at a Silvertips' night, a fan may come at 6 o'clock and stay there for the entire night because there's no constraints on parking time and that. And the restaurant owner, customers who aren't going to the Silvertips don't have parking because it's all crowded. That could be alleviated really well with paid-on-street parking and time limits and so forth. So.
That would reduce parking available for the events, though?
Uh, yeah.
If they can't, I mean, if it's a two-hour parking meter, then that would limit, because baseball games usually run much longer.
Well, yes. It would, according to the parking studies, it would, it would drive parkers to off-street parking. For example, the Ever Park Garage, which is 600 stalls roughly, has very low occupancy on Silvertips' nights, because there is so much free street parking. And so 2,600 stalls, if you imagine a game, you know, that is really ample for the 2,500, unless everybody comes alone and doesn't use public transportation, which doesn't typically happen. That should be quite ample for the, for the impact of the game. So certainly happy to dig, I always love talking parking, but that's probably enough for now. But please let me know if I can be of further help.
I do have more questions, but if you want to.
Yeah, I wanted to jump in here real quick. Can we get the links to the website, like in the minutes, or in the, via your presentation?
Absolutely.
So if someone from the public could, when they're viewing this program, they can just click on the links. Okay, thanks. Councilmember Bader?
Thanks, Council President. Yeah, great presentations, and thanks for all the work on everybody's part for this. I would echo Councilmember Ratuie in saying, yeah, I think it would have been ideal to have something in the slides here, because I think, even though we put the links on, I think people are going to look at this presentation and go, where's that data? And now are we going to be making up time next week? Throwing up a few more slides with the costs and revenue on there? I don't know if it's possible tonight, and I hate to lengthen this meeting, but if there's anything you guys had available that you could plug in here before we get done tonight, I think it'd be worth having in there. And footnote on parking, the assumptions for the revenue for the Funko site, the current site, do assume parking will be charged for in the future, right? Just quick.
That's actually using school district-owned sites.
Sure, right, right.
Yeah. So it would require an agreement between the city and the school district, but a little bit of, little bit of potential revenue is projected there.
Those of us who go occasionally, like me, and get to score the free parking there right now, are going to be out of luck regardless of which option we go for, right? So. And I think part of that, the explanation too, is, I mean, at least in the cover letter, I think, from Chair Sastrum, that it mentioned that regardless of which option we choose, there's a $37 million, what did it say? 39 million funding gap or shortfall? And so I think that would help to explain how we close that funding shortfall referenced in that December 5th letter of his, and I think you kind of explained it orally, but again, I think it would be nice to be able to have seen that, you know, in print. A couple of questions here. So first, the impact on the school district. You know, that was brought up. What, can you tell us more about what the school district did and how they participated, and what their concern was, and anything you can elaborate on that one?
Scott?
Dan, Chad Volpe, Danny, and Pat Filippone from the Aquasocks. And I met with the school district on a fairly regular basis over the course of the last, well, really close to a year now. And I want to, there was a question asked during public comment about what impact will it have, and I think this is probably a good opportunity. Speaking with Caroline Mason and Dr. Saltzman, the financial impact is very minimal to the Everett School District. Between the very small amount of rent that's paid by the Aquasocks and then the maintenance cost for the field, it's really, really a wash. So it's not like we're, if we choose a downtown site, that Funko Field is going to fall into disarray. In fact, probably just the opposite, because it's going to be used significantly less. With regards to the meetings, you can imagine what, you know, meeting two or three times, well, sometimes in a month, we cover a lot of ground. And we still have a great working relationship with the school district, and they want to see Everett succeed, because when Everett succeeds as a city, the school district succeeds. And we, we actually agree with him on that. I mean, clearly, a strong school district is going to make a strong city, and a strong city is going to make a strong school district. So going forward, we'll continue to work with the school district, and I think that that relationship is really set in stone right now, and it's more in a good place with them.
Very good. Great, thanks, Scott.
And can I just add that Dr. Saltzman could be no more fan of keeping the Aquasocks, bigger fan of keeping the Aquasocks in town. I mean, he really wants to just emphasize the school district is a full partner in whatever the council decides, and whichever way going forward, either at the school district site or the downtown site. He's just a huge baseball fan.
Great, great, thanks. Another question, and obviously, I think, you know, I hear a bandit about the community, and I think the mayor addressed it to some extent here, in terms of, well, we're spending money on a stadium that we could use for other things. And so if you could address that, and also, thinking about CIP funds, are, is there an opportunity cost here we're missing out on if we use CIP funds to support this stadium?
I want to jump in there first, and then maybe, you know, at some point, hand it over to Lori, but every decision we spend, where we spend those CIP funds is a decision for you all. We can spend it on park infrastructure, we can spend it on a stadium, we can spend it on any number of projects. There's endless amounts of projects that we could spend those funds on. We can't spend it on the library hours, and we can't spend it on hiring police officers or park rangers, or expanding fire departments, or anything like that. But we can spend it on stuff, big, big capital stuff. And so it's a choice. And so, you know, the opportunity cost is, you know, if we, if we spend those funds on a stadium, they are not readily available for the next big park project that we might also want to invest in. I spoke at one of the community meetings, the first community meeting, there was a question, and, and I, you know, rightly so, it's like, if you do this, you're not going to be doing something else. And I said, that is correct. If we do this, if we build this stadium, we won't be building another park right away or some other, buying a new building right away, or doing something else that we may all want to do. What I like about this project is that we can have a return on that investment. There's endless investments that we'd love to make in the city, and I wish we had a lot of money, because there's so much need and so many great amenities we could build. This is one of those amenities that we can make money back. The other amenities are also very important. They don't have that same economic driver, so there's the, the opportunity cost, we're not losing the economics, but we're losing maybe a different type of park, or some other amenity that we'd also really like. So it's a choice.
I think that answered the question, unless you guys wanted to add anything more, but that was good. Yeah.
I'll just chip in quickly. This, this use of CIP funds will also be creating a park in the urban center. It will be an active park where most of it is being used. It will be an active park where most of it is being used, you know, leased to private partners. But there will be passive park area too. And as we all know, the downtown core, where we expect to have a lot of housing, and when I say a lot, I mean a lot of housing, needs places to walk your dog. It needs places for park activity. And when we've seen different models of ball fields like this, we realize that a lot of them during the daytime hours can be opened up. So field areas beyond can be used for, you know, workers downtown, residents downtown. And so this is kind of a... And I don't know if you remember the Wayback Machine, but when we initially talked about this as a multipurpose facility, it was stadium, park, and amphitheater. And we still anticipate in the downtown setting, having all three of those components in it. So it is, yeah, we won't be building another park facility, but we are building a park with this amenity. And we are attracting private state and county money, seven to one. And we are able to have revenue stream that, you know, you don't typically get with a park unless it's a golf course or something like that. Thank you.
One last question.
Councilmember Bader, you had one other question we haven't addressed. What other events can we host?
First of all, I think it's important that if we build downtown, we'll open the doors on day one with 106 scheduled events if the USL comes in as a partner. 66 baseball games and 40 soccer games. I'm not going to say it's unheard of, but I'm going to say that's almost unheard of for a new venue like that. Success is measured in venues in increments of, you know, 110 is successful, 120, you're doing really well, 130 scheduled events, and you're really in the right place. And we're going to open the doors with 106 scheduled events with two tenants that are going to sign long-term leases if the USL comes as a partner and if we build downtown. With regards to what else we can do in the downtown facility, the sky's the limit. I mean, it really is the limits. I think it was Mr. Rutledge that talked about the Christmas theme or the holiday theme that he's seeing in wherever it was, I apologize. But the Volpes are doing that now in Stockton, California. They're setting it up, well, actually, it's open now. They run a whole holiday theme during the month of December, where they've got ice skating, they've got Santa Claus. I mean, you can imagine what you could do with that kind of square footage. In addition, you know, I say the sky's the limit, motocross, tractor pull. I mean, anything you can think of that you can do in an outdoor facility, this facility will be designed to host those type of events. There's a lot of challenges to doing those events at the school district site. Accessibility for tractor trailers to bring in stages, to bring in a heavy equipment to set up for a motocross, a tractor pull. Not really a good... It's not possible now, and it looks like it probably would remain that way just the way the design of the field and the way the stadium's set up with the streets and the fencing and such, so.
Very good. Okay, thanks. Actually, I think I'll pass on my third question, maybe come back.
Great, thanks. Great start. Councilmember Ryan.
Great, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I live and breathe online and what the public is saying and not saying about different things. So I wanted to actually take a step back for a bit of level setting, mostly for journalists out there who are reporting on this. Can you just give a reminder of why we're going down this road? And that it's not a choice that we wanted to necessarily go on and that the timing is pretty dismal.
We're so fast, yeah.
But can we just take a little time machine back to walk us through how we got to where we are today?
Yeah. I joined this group midstream on this, but I've heard the story enough that I can probably share it. Major League Baseball changed the rules. They had, at one point in time, 140-ish lower-level professional teams across the country. And they changed the design standard for these facilities. With regards to clubhouses, dugouts, female facilities, we're seeing a lot more female trainers, female umpires, female managers. And the 100, well, I'm going to say 100% of the facilities across the country four years ago weren't prepared for that. And the design standards have come in, and now with Major League Baseball setting these standards, you comply or you lose your license as a franchise. And we heard tonight about why are we going so fast, why are we going so fast? It's our only option. In order to save the Everett Aquasocks, we have to be compliant with this list of changes to comply with Major League Baseball's new rules in order to keep our team.
Yeah, and I'll just add, Major League, when they changed the rules, it was because minor league stadiums have to meet Major League Stadium requirements. They already got rid of 40 teams across the country, and then they demanded that all stadiums meet these requirements in a short amount of time. We've been working very hard, as quickly as a little city government can work, to partner with the Aquasocks to try to address... I think we have the worst stadium in the country as far, when it comes to compliance with this Major League requirements. So we've had the furthest to go, which is why it's a complete redo, although other cities are having to completely rebuild their stadiums as well. And we have cities that are losing their teams. So we know that if we don't do anything, we will lose them. And that's why we're working so hard and so fast, and that's why it's this project. That's why this is the path we're, you know, we're doing at this time. But it is frustrating, to Grant's point, to be moving this fast. You know, we've been working on it a long time, but we are working at a record pace for government. And sadly, Major League is calling the shots. And if we don't comply, we will lose the Aquasocks, so.
And it's my understanding we're actually moving a little bit slow for Major League standards and that Aquasocks are in trouble and getting fined because we haven't moved quick enough. So even at our fastest pace, it's too slow for Major League.
Yeah, sorry, Ben, I'll make one comment on that. Eight, nine months ago, there were 120 teams that were noncompliant. Today, there's three. We're no longer able to hide behind 120 other teams. The focus is on Everett right now.
Thank you. Mayor Franklin, would you also mind just giving a little commentary too about people? I've heard a lot of concerns about our libraries being shut down and frustrations with park rangers. But yeah, we're building a new stadium. So can you talk a little bit about the funding and how it's not general fund dollars? And it's, those are, this is two separate things.
Yeah, the only funding that we are looking at for this, that are from city sources, is CIP funding, so capital funding, and bond, bonding from, based on the revenue of this. And it's all in the report, and we'll try to get a slide up next week with some. The decision that's before council tonight is not how this is funded. That's why digging into the details of the funding is challenging. We have strong recommendations from the fiscal advisory. A lot of the actual budget of this project comes from the, through this progressive design-build process and additional analysis that our financial team has to make. So it's, again, this timeline is so compressed and we're making decisions. That's why we are grateful for all the off-ramps that are in this project. But the funding that we've identified and that we will be recommending at some point spending on this project is not city operational dollars that we can use to expand library hours. It's not dollars that we can use to hire park rangers. It's not dollars that we can use to address increases in costs or salaries for staff. As costs go up every year, it is strictly capital-type program dollars. And so we could spend it on building a new building or building a new park or something like that, but not city operations.
Great, thank you. I would request from administration, it's to reevaluate our outreach and engagement about this topic. It's feeling like that part of the message isn't quite making it as far into the community as we would like for it to be, so I would love to see a reevaluation of that. If Major League Baseball is requiring this of us, what are the Mariners, how are the Mariners pitching in or Major League Baseball pitching in for the new stadium?
It's a great question. I think if Chad were here, this is the owner of the Aquasocks, I think this is how he would answer. Major League Baseball does not make any contribution to this project. The Aquasocks are prepared to step forward and make a significant contribution of, in the case of the downtown site, and this is a number that Chad has shared publicly, up to $10 million that they would invest upfront in that facility. And that represents over a decade and a half of actual net revenue at the end of the day for their operation. But the Aquasocks believes that deeply in the city. So that's the bulk of the private contribution that would come from the baseball side. We would expect that USL would make a similar upfront capital contribution to the project.
Thanks. So over the last year or so, I've been, any chance that I've gotten, I've mentioned about the Kansas City Urban Youth Academy. It's run out of Kansas City, and it's administered through the Kansas City Royals' charity arm of their group. And funding from the Kansas City Royals through the creation of the Urban Youth Academy was used to build their stadium. And so I had suggested that several times to get in, to see if there was a way that maybe the charity arm of the Mariners would be able to pitch in through some sort of youth academy here in Everett. So I was curious if that had been explored, if my suggestion had been explored after mentioning it a number of times over the past year.
At this time, no. I think when the slide showed future partners, in our mind, the site selection is a prerequisite before we start approaching groups like the Mariners or their charity with specifics because we don't know exactly what we have to work with at this time. Obviously, lots more opportunities for customizing the downtown site and building in things that there might be private investment for. So at this time, no, but yes, definitely in our mind to have different things like that.
I'll just add, yeah, the private investors, the private organizations we've talked about this project with said, when you have a site, come back to us. So we can't secure additional private dollars until we know where we're building. I know that Chad is interested in talking to the Mariners. The Mariners love us, love having the Aquasocks here. I would love to see them as an investor, whether it's their charity arm or others. So, but I do believe that that will happen in post-site selection. Thank you, and please keep nudging us.
Yeah. And I think my last question, we had received the letter from the Downtown Everett Association with some concerns. I was hoping that council could work with administration to put a response letter together. But one part that was mentioned that we haven't covered yet was the impact of light rail. So I was hoping if there's an easy way to overlay a downtown site with future light rail stations and how that would impact future light rail stations, not just the placement of the stations themselves, but in the possibility that light rail can be extended even further north. There are concerns that a stadium might block that ability to head north in 2087.
Yeah, that's... And you speak true words. The, we actually just met with the Downtown Everett Association, and we're going to respond point by point to their letter. And they were, they were all positive. They were just, they're digging in already on finding solutions to different things like that. And they're appropriately concerned about light rail because light rail is going to be an enormous boon to our downtown. Thankfully, all the really bad alternatives for light rail stations have been eliminated in private work. The city's Metro Everett preferred station location was, let's say, in the bull's eye of a Target. And the three alternatives now are within, you know, a couple hundred yards of that bull's eye. And they're just, they're just aligned slightly different. We can get that easily image for you. That said, the stadium provides some degree of complexity to a couple of those designs, should it be selected. But we're working with Sound Transit Engineering. Actually, we had a meeting yesterday about some of their findings. And I will just summarize by saying, all three locations are still on the table. The stadium doesn't, if the stadium's downtown site is selected, none of them are like, it's not a fatal flaw for any of them. Changes how some of them connect to transit and different things like that.
And I'll just add, I'm on the Sound Transit board, and Sound Transit has considered the stadium location. They consider any kind of pending projects when they're putting that out. And though, as Dan shared, it may change where the exits and entrance of stations are, but it doesn't actually change the station location. The station locations work with the stadium. Sound Transit actually submitted a letter of support for the downtown site. They see it as a great amenity to have near light rail, so they were very supportive of the downtown location and see it as a complimentary asset to their light rail stations.
Great, thank you.
And Steph has actually been working with them for over a year on this because we saw this coming.
Great. Yeah, I would echo my colleague's surprise that there weren't more numbers included. I think the letter from, Fred has, you know, showing the, for each field and then the difference, and it's 39 million, but it's only 51% of one, 33 of the other. So I think just a better comprehensive chart of cost, funding, likelihood of being able to pay off a bond, the economic impact, just some of those like standard metrics, I think, would be helpful for, visual for us and the community and all that fun stuff. Thanks.
Great comments.
Okay, Councilmember Sarlingo.
Well, let's see, building on what others have explored. One of the critical issues that comes up in major public projects these days is costs. We've seen so many things expand way beyond the original intent or the original expectations, and then people feel trapped. And clearly, one of the things I've been paying close attention to, partly because the city has been using progressive design-build in other areas to improve delivery and reduce risk. That's something, I guess, here, if I understand this correctly, of course, the decision for us now is a location, not a commitment to go ahead. And the next steps, as I understand them, with progressive design-build as opposed to design-bid-build, where you get surprised at how expensive it is, once you've got a design done, is that we will be working with architect, engineering firms, and essentially designing to a number that we feel like we can support. So there's a sequence here, if I've got this correct, that's different than typical design-bid-build, but where we have confidence that the financial arrangements are in place that are aligned with the actual thing that we can deliver, and we have confidence that that's acceptable to Major League Baseball as a solution to this field concern.
Correct.
I'm square on that?
Yeah, so the traditional design-bid-build process is the one that results in the most surprises consistently around cost. Because you design something, you put all your hopes and dreams in there, and then you go out to market. You have no idea what the market's going to say until they respond and bid. We've gone to the state of Washington, received approval from the state body that oversees alternative public delivery methods for capital projects for public entities to utilize progressive design-build that brings together the contractor and the architect on one team, which means every design decision the architect makes will receive immediate feedback from the market on cost.
So that's where they will do an active trade-off to see, to avoid doing dumb things or uneconomical things.
Or do really smart things to save us money, which is, yeah.
Okay. Let's see. One of the questions that comes up is the difference between the Funko Field location and the downtown location, is that I assume that if we're going to reconstruct Funko Field, then for a season or more, Funko Field won't be available for the school district or the Aquasocks or other uses?
Correct, it would be closed for a year.
So we would lose some continuity in the Aquasocks operation year? They would have to play only away games?
Correct, they would play away games for one season.
And I assume the school district would suffer that as well. Yeah, and I guess drawing a sharp point on one of the questions that had come up before. The thing I think we'll hear, have heard very often from our community members is, hey, wait a minute. When taxes, when the tax and revenue situation is so difficult, are you... are you using tax money for this?" And the specific answer to that is, we are not using things that we were asking for our Proposition 1 in August for a levy lid lift. We are not using this for that kind of things. The sources for this are some capital funds from the city and then largely other bonding and other funds from other entities.
That's correct.
Okay, that's enough.
Councilmember Vogli.
My turn?
Yes.
A lot of questions have been answered, and again, you know, numbers, 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 where are they? And we've heard the answers, and so, let's get it going, folks. This has to do with water sewer infrastructure, and I know that we had the, you know, the SEPA and everything, and I'm not sure if it was really involved. We have really, really old pipes here in the city of Everett, and, you know, we're over 100 years old. How will, or has it been studied, and I just missed it or forgot, how will this increase of many flushing toilets be? I know Ryan Sasse is here, and he probably doesn't have the answer right now. We're going to be talking about utility rates later, but has that been discussed?
It's a great question. That has not been discussed yet. It is certainly part of the process. It'll most fundamentally come through the permit process. And as all the various city departments and utilities review the facility, they'll ensure that if there is any necessary upgrades, whether that's transformers or sewer mains, overhead, power relocation, all those things will become part of the requirements for delivering the project to receive a permit at the end of the day.
And I'm wondering if we're going to have, I forget the words for it, but itty-bitty taxes to, for, I guess would be against us if we're, the city is building it, you know. I wish I knew that, I didn't write it down beforehand. But when people build things...
Impact fees?
Impact fees, thank you very much. There are oftentimes impact fees, and I know that if you're building something, you only have to take care of your bit of land that you're building on. But all of the sewer stuff goes together with everybody else's sewer stuff. So like, is there going to be impact fees? And maybe this is with the numbers that are coming up next week and further on down. So that's one very specific part of my puzzle.
Yeah, the system extensions fees are one part where you're extending water mains and things like that. And then there's impact fees and will be treated like any other city project, like the Everett Municipal Building and doing the, in the new construction and new park. So, yeah, be beholden to that as well as entering into a project labor agreement as well.
And then, on a completely different note, thank you, and I look forward to hearing more about that later. There were 120 teams in this predicament, and now there are only three. I am curious how many teams, if any, had to dismantle and are no longer teams out of that.
Right now, the only one that I'm aware of is Eugene Emerald's, my home town, is losing their team.
Okay, so people have figured it out and done their due diligence. Has anybody had to switch towns and switch owners and all of that? Okay, just, I mean, it's a curiosity, but...
Yeah, I believe Eugene's the only one, and that's correct.
Yeah, so other states are different than Washington. So Washington, baseball has different challenges on the West Coast. Our West Coast states don't invest as heavily in sporting facilities. I think other states just build the stadiums and give the money. And so, other cities could more quickly address this problem because they were just fully funded by larger government entities. We don't have that opportunity, but we are grateful for the $7.4 million we did get from Washington State.
Yes.
It's just the different states operate differently.
I was watching something about Ticketmaster and Live Nation and capitalism, and when basketball expanded and basketball was like awesome and big, that's when music started really being made popular so that they're playing in arenas, right? And we're thinking about having music in these football, baseball, soccer fields and arenas. And I don't think I could clearly put my thoughts together for all of you, but sports have done a big service to getting lots of people to see music. And music is also a coming-together piece, and because of corporate entities, they charge a whole lot of money that I imagine maybe the cities might get in some ticket sales. So, do with that what you will. It's just commentary, not necessarily questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fossey, questions?
I don't have questions. Can I provide comments at this time?
Okay, all right, thank you. So I have a couple of...
I think she said she...
Oh, you have comments, you said? Sorry. I'm ready to go, can you tell? Come on.
So the, I feel like probably the most volume of emails that I have ever received was when I had made a comment or an action that the community had interpreted as not supporting the Aquasocks. And so, we have a very active community that loves our Aquasocks and all that they provide. And we had a very wonderful, like transparent and amazing process with the Fiscal Advisory Committee. I really enjoyed being a part of that, but I am just baffled why there is not data. Like, the presentation that you're giving, you have amazing numbers. We went through all of this. We touched on so many things. We talked about light rail. We talked about, you know, what we were looking at. We pursued all of these options, looking at all of these revenue avenues and looking at how this is going to be paid for, and I don't see that translated here. And I'm just so confused because that would be the exact information that the council will be looking for prior to voting on this, so there's some time to digest it. It was such good information and such good work done, making sure that we were being mindful not to raise taxes. And I'm just confused on the presentation. My comment?
I'll just say, I don't think we have an answer to that. You know, we provided the full fiscal advisory report to council, and we should have put a whole bunch more slides in there with numbers. I'll just be very honest, the numbers are going to move around, right? Because we have to go through additional financial analysis of all of them. But we'll be happy to provide those numbers. They are in your materials, and we'll provide them in a kind of short edited fashion, hopefully as soon as tomorrow. And we will put slides up next week. You know, I didn't produce the slides, but just on behalf of my team, I'm going to apologize that we didn't have enough. I think also, we run into challenges with meetings like this. It's already 8:30. We have a couple other meaty agenda items, and so it's probably my direction to staff to limit the PowerPoints as much as possible, and we probably just edited out the wrong information. I apologize.
Well, I guess to everyone on council, there's good data coming that helps make sense of all of this, because we saw it on the Fiscal Advisory Committee, including even potential future revenue options and partners and all those types of things that, yeah. President Schwab?
Okay, you good? Any more comments? Okay, a couple of things. One is, as I kind of mentioned before here a couple weeks ago, about the enormous amount of work this group has to do. And we went through basically two budget cycles, and now we have this decision before us. All the information is available on that website, so I guess I would ask if you could put a little more in a silver platter package for council and maybe refine some of the numbers. That would be fine, that would be good. There's a lot of reading. And one thing I wanted to ask you guys to address is the closing the gap. What I mean is the estimated cost of each project, we're looking at two potentially, the amount of money that we can generate, kind of already have committed to the project, what the costs are and the ability to close the gaps. Now, I'm just going to make the assumption here that, I'd like you to address the challenges of closing the gap of each site, or maybe the benefits.
Dan, you want me to take a first crack at that?
Yes.
Sure. So, Council President, great question. I'll identify for you tonight four potential paths to close that gap, and we're just not there today. So the Fiscal Advisory Committee, appropriately in the report that you have, identifies known sources that are either at hand or near at hand. But the four potential paths, aggressive negotiations with our two private partners that we have in play right now. The second path is returning to Snohomish County for additional funding. Third path, returning to the state for additional funding. Fourth path, going to the federal level and seeking a significant investment in this project. And earmarks are back, that's a real thing, that's a real potential path. So just for the council tonight, those are four. There are others, but those are four, and those are all four contemplated in the Fiscal Advisory Committee recommendation.
And is there one site that we will have better odds of getting, closing that gap?
As you narrow in and you have a site and a project, there are, there's funding opportunities that you simply can't pursue until you have a site. In fact, I believe the state funding, while it's been allocated, we can't actually access that funding until a site is selected.
Yeah, thank you.
And if I'd like, can I add something to this? And it's something that's, the number we're least sure about is how much the thing is going to cost. Because that was an Aquasocks-funded design with an Aquasocks-funded cost estimate. And it was very, I will say, back-of-the-envelope kind of design. And if you've ever worked with a contractor, when there's not real clear design, then they escalate everything to cover their risk. And so, those are pretty big numbers. And so, part of our reluctance to share numbers is not with what we know we can generate on the revenue side or on the CIP side, but on how much we think that will, the stadium will cost. And especially with, now that we are going to go with progressive design build, our team will be designing. And so, you know, maybe we don't have to pay for a Lexus, we can pay for a Toyota instead. And that will make a lot of things work. And maybe we can phase a downtown project and do something. We don't do the covering initially, we just pour the footings. And that's something for future, that we can fund in the future. So maybe that 120 million number is for a fully complete stadium, but you can do 80 and then do 40 later, once you have the arena paid off or something like that. So, that's part of the frustration that we're under with sharing numbers is, you know, oh, you've got this $40 million gap, well, we're going to share, we're going to close it on the cost side as well as on the revenue side.
And then, thank you for that. And then, a question about this project seems to be dependent on the revenue. Revenue, selling revenue bonds, and it's based on the ability for the facility to generate revenue. And there is a significant difference between the two sites, is that correct?
Yes.
So part of the closing the gap is the amount of revenue that each site can produce?
Correct, yeah. There's much larger revenue potential at the downtown site than Funko Field.
In addition to the revenue model being significantly better at the downtown site, we have to remember that we've got a private partner that's talking about contributing $10 to $15 million of initial upfront investment.
And I have also in the process, I think is really important, we commit to a site next week. How quickly do you think there'll be a, we're not going to be committed to a large amount of dollars at that point, correct?
That is correct. This month is only site selection. Next month, in January, you'll have a decision with an initial recommendation for that progressive design build team. That will have dollars attached, but it won't, you know, it won't be $20 million. It'll be several million dollars attached to that decision. And it will be at some point later next year, once the progressive design build team, and our challenge to them is going to be to right-size this within the means that are available to the city of Everett. You'll have multiple decision points before you arrive at approving a contract for construction. And that's where the most significant dollars will come into play at that point.
That's about a year from now.
About a year from now, correct, Mayor?
So to go along with that, in your best estimate, if we commit to a site, when do other revenue sources and say, maybe the soccer team and other groups, look like, I mean, how is that commitments, how do you see those commitments coming?
Yeah, I would love to tell you, it's all, you know, in a logical sequence, it'll all happen in parallel. As negotiations advance with each of the potential private partners in the Aquasocks and USL, we'll get much greater clarity around the net revenue that we can expect from the stadium. And at the same time, the progressive design build team will be giving us real-time feedback on cost. So I think by the time we get into the spring, we'll have much greater clarity on both those fronts. And you will need that clarity before you authorize a construction contract. You simply can't approve a construction contract without having all the funding in place.
Okay, and then I have one other question, one last one. And could you just address kind of the list of consultants and their experience? I mean, I looked at the list, I'm familiar with them. It was pretty credible consultants and the experts that we hired. Matter of fact, I'm a lot more, my impression is they wouldn't be available for this type of project, but since kind of the market persists, we have some pretty good names that are looking at our project.
Yeah, we can get you a comprehensive list. I'll just share, again, a little bit of background on SOJ, Shields, Obles, Johnson, that I'm a partner with. We started in the Pacific Northwest, building Safeco Field. I had a significant role in the early enabling for Climate Pledge Arena, and one of our founding partners, and my mentor was the project executive on that facility. We also did Showware Center and a number of other facilities. My partner, Ethan, who's actually on our team for this project as well, is leading all of the capital improvements for the local organizing committee for the World Cup. And that includes statewide analysis of facilities, cost, very rapid delivery on very tight budgets to meet the World Cup in 2026. So, just within our firm, a fair bit of expertise on ball fields.
So I know I said one last question. Is there part of the work that we're going to be doing is maybe examining from a big picture on how unrepresented groups in our city could benefit from this project?
Yes, I'll actually take that for just a moment, it's okay. Go for it, Scott.
Arm wrestling, go for it. Great question, Councilmember Schwab, President Schwab. Ben and I had the opportunity to spend a couple hours with Justin Papadakis, the owner of the USL. And we took Justin around really all of Everett, and we looked at multiple sites where they would be interested in building a professional-grade practice facility. This is, would be a project where it'd be a state-of-the-art field training facility for the team, teams, men and women's. And they typically would practice, based on what Justin shared with us, 8:00 AM and noon. And then the facility would be turned over to the public. They would install lights, so the fields could be used at night. When we, we spent some time on Casino Road one evening. It was well after dark, and there's no lights at Walter. And we pulled in, and Justin's like, "This is a great location." We talked a little bit about the development opportunities there, how soccer is really part of the community. And I couldn't have painted a better picture until we drove about a mile down the road and turned into Cash Park, and all the lights were on, and there was literally 300 kids playing soccer. And Justin's like, "Wow, we need to do this here." And, "Well, let's look at some other facilities, look at some other sites." And we took him and looked at Phil Johnson, and he's like, "Yeah, I like this, but I really like what I saw back there on Casino Road." We took him to Jackson Park in North Everett. We took him to Jackson Park in North Everett, and not sure a field would fit there. And again, I really like what we saw back at Casino Road, and I think that we could really make an impact in that community, having professional athletes play soccer on a daily basis with, with young kids.
All right, I'll stop hogging the time, I know it's late. Any other questions from Council? Councilmember Tuohy?
Just one. So, in looking at the preliminary revenue and expense model, they're listed parking as $650,000 worth of revenue, and we're not charging for parking. So, I'm not sure how that got in there, or what the thought was. So, I guess my question is, when will we have a more realistic financial model for this, for the stadium?
That includes some assumptions around some initial parking facilities. There's a location, if you look at the initial rendering for the downtown site, there's potential for surface parking on the southeast corner and northeast corner of the site. So, that's where those numbers are generated from. The more detailed numbers come as the design itself becomes more detailed and real, and we can align that with cost. So, how much facility can we purchase upfront? And how many of those components of that facility are revenue generating? Those two will gain clarity together.
So, where the parking would be, is that real estate that we're purchasing, when we buy all of it, and say, if we are at the downtown location?
It would need to be, yes.
Well, that's a lot of income.
Correct.
$650,000 projected, so, kind of makes sense to do it, but if you're going to be there. All right, thank you. That's it.
Councilmember Bader?
No, I'm good.
Oh, you're good, sorry, I thought that was like, stop the hand, right? Yeah, anyone else? Okay, just to kind of summarize, thank you very much for the meeting, and then summarize some of the things that Admin's going to provide, that you got from your notes, just because I know we've had a long meeting. Could someone kind of summarize your impression, or you're going to provide counsel?
I can, yes. One of the key things you all requested was a good summary of the actual numbers. There's lots of detail in the Fiscal Advisory Committee report, so we'll pull out a high-level summary of those numbers, both the revenue projections and cost projections, and how they feed together, as well as some detail on the actual funding sources. That is also included in the Fiscal Advisory Committee report, so we'll, we'll pull that forward for you. And I'll also, Councilmember Ryan, I have a few comments around just the pace of the project. I'll save those, just in summary, a couple bullets. I think we're on a good pace, not moving as fast as everybody thinks, it's just the weight of the decisions before you become very, very real. So, we'll have a little bit of a summary of that, too.
President Schwab, I also have, you want a clear, like, list of available resources online? We'll provide that, as well as send out the economic impact study and update to Councilmember Tuohy, and promote more the distinction between capital fund and general fund.
Great.
And then, I also have that we're addressing DEA concerns, and making sure that we're closing the loop with the information that they provided, and I believe Dan and the team are doing that, talking about opportunity costs regarding the CIP funds, as Councilmember Bader referenced, and reevaluating our outreach and engagement regarding how the stadium would be funded to help the community understand.
And thank you.
And also, the reason behind that it's Major League Baseball putting "not us."
Yeah, just kidding, real quick, my, the reports were good, good, good information. My concern about sharing the data tonight, it wasn't for us, it was that the public didn't see it, as well, I guess, so, thanks.
And that's why I suggested maybe having links on the minutes, the council minutes, the meeting minutes, so. Thank you guys for taking, making the list and doing the work, and we'll commit to read it, that you provide it.
Thank you.
Okay, I think just, just to kind of sum up, I'd like to do action item number 18, and then take a quick break. So, Lori?
I believe we have, yes, we do. Heidi is joining us here for the budget amendment, action item.
Okay, we're ready for action item 18.
Oh, sure, this is the final and third and final reading.
Okay, I'll read it, how's that first, okay? Council Bill 2411-39, third and final reading, adopt a ordinance approving the appropriations of the 2024 revised City of Everett budget, and amending ordinance number 4046-24. And could we get a good briefing first, before we?
No briefing, just available.
Okay, do we have any questions? Questions from counsel? Councilmember Fosse? Okay, nothing. Well, thank you for hanging around for this only, I hope you got all your questions answered about the stadium, too, so thank you very much for being here. Okay, so, do I have a motion?
Counsel President, I'll move item number 18, adopt the ordinance approving the appropriations of the revised budget.
Counselor Ryan, seconds.
Okay, we have motion, a second. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Tuohy?
Yes.
Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogli?
Yes.
Councilmember Fosse?
Yes.
President Schwab?
Yes, okay, we'll take a five-minute recess. Clerk, will you? Thanks.
Okay, welcome back everybody and I appreciate everybody's patience and commitment to what we're trying to achieve here tonight. A lot of information, so we are moving to item number 10. Oh no, which one are we moving to? 10, okay, I got it right, good. First reading, Council Bill 2411-41, first reading, adopt a ordinance establishing Everett utility rates for the 2025 through 2028 operating years. Public hearing is the 18th and the third and final reading is January 8th, '25. So tonight, we read it into the record and then we're doing briefing and then answer questions from council. Good, thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Good evening, council members. Ryan Sasse with Public Works. I have a few opening comments I'd like to share. Everett's public utilities provide drinking water, surface water management, and wastewater collection and treatment as a core part of our utility mission. Our water utility is regional in scope and provides water for a population of about 670,000 residents or about three quarters of Snohomish County. Utility rates are based on a cost recovery model and are managed as an independent enterprise fund. A detailed cost of service study has been prepared by our team and also by our independent consultant to provide a rate model sufficient to recover the costs for providing the services that we provide. Now Everett benefits from the admirable vision and determination of those that came before us. They dedicated significant resources in the early part of the 20th century when the city invested in a vast water collection and delivery system, including collecting water in the Cascades 20 miles away in the pristine Sultan River Basin. That water was transported to the city in woodstave pipes and collected and stored in open concrete reservoirs that were built with horse-drawn equipment. Now it's incumbent on us as stewards to continue to carefully maintain, replace, and improve this forever infrastructure so that it can serve our community indefinitely. The challenge for this upcoming rate period is to maintain affordability while complying with a mandate to reduce or eliminate combined sewer overflows. This is a requirement that we're mandated to do by agreed order with the Department of Ecology that is, has to be complete by 2027. I'm gonna go off script a little bit here and give you the kind of the Cliff Notes version of how are we gonna do that? Is that the, the size and scope of eliminating, reducing combined sewer overflow is large. It's a big expensive program that we have to undertake. And the way that we do that and maintain affordability is we're gonna have to assume moderate risk and delay and defer our normal routine types of capital program projects that we would be otherwise doing. With that, at this time, I'd like to introduce Sean Bridge. Sean is our Finance and Support Services Superintendent to introduce his team and to provide the briefing for cost of service study and rate ordinance.
Thanks, Ryan, and you know, good evening, council. So we've, we've completed our comprehensive cost of service study and we started that in February. It's a big project, a lot of size, scope, and complexity, and we're happy to present it to you tonight. I want to do some few greetings and a few introductions. You know, there was, there were some really smart people working on this and me, but I don't want to convey the impression I do this all myself. So, I think we've got Sean Corn. Sean works for HDR Engineering and he's our consultant and he is, I figured with this project, this size, scope, and complexity, I think we'd have a better chance of success if we found the shortest Sean around and the tallest Sean around to really bring this thing home, and that's exactly what we did. But then, in all seriousness, I worked with Sean's predecessor, a guy named Tom Gould, back in probably about 2005, '07? And, and Tom was an incredible luminary in the field of cost allocation and utility rate settings and how utilities recover costs. And he took, on an impressionable young me, and really made that exciting. And so I really, and I've carried that enthusiasm through most of my career. So I am grateful for Sean and I'm grateful that Tom, on his way into retirement, passed a lot of that information off to Sean and we can still use him as a resource and he's been a great resource throughout the process. We also have Lindsay Mu. Lindsay's our Support Services Manager and, don't be shy, Lindsay, say hi. And she's, she's just been a, also a great resource. There is nobody in the city that has a better understanding of the flow of financial resources through our utility billing department than Lynn's, and she's one of the ones I'm just grateful for every day. We have Sarah Superville next to Lindsay behind me. Sarah's our Budget and Compliance Manager and she, she honed her skill set at the State Auditor's Office the last eight years and that's, that's super important. I love those SAO people primarily because they get to see a lot of governments. They see big governments, they see small governments, they see county governments, they see municipal governments, and it gives them an incredible insight and perspective into, this is a really well-run government. This is maybe not as well-run and this one's just a bloated bureaucracy. And, and as a result of that, Sarah working here elevates us and I'm really absolutely grateful for both of them. And, and then there's me. I'm, I'm, I'm here and I'm old and I'm aging and I'm tired and it hurts getting up in the morning. I, I don't know what the future holds for me, but I'm super excited because of these two. I do know who holds the future and we're, we're blessed to have them working here. Why do we do a cost of service study? It's big and again, we started that in February. Size, scope, and complexity, it's significant and we really only get one thing out of it, but it's a really, really important thing and it's a revenue requirement. And that revenue requirement gets applied across the three cost centers that we have as a self-supporting utility, like Ryan said. And, and that's capital and it's labor and it's our operations and maintenance cost. I'd like to take a look, you know, focus on this side, capital. Capital's really our biggest cost center. If you're building stuff, that's a whole lot more expensive than maintaining stuff. And especially this Mortenson Construction Cost Index, and there's a huge, huge component to what the utility does that's firmly rooted in construction. But I'd like to kind of draw your attention to that red box around 2021. And if we look at the year-over-year change, it's 26.1%. And that, that broke our forecasting models and that's a lot of the reason why we're here today and why we're talking about rate increases. Never ever would have anticipated that spike. And if you add in the following year, 5%, and then it did slope off a little bit, but we've, we've got a 38% increase in Construction Cost Index. I never ever would have anticipated that spike and that's why I want to really drive home the point that that just broke our models. If, if we'd sat around and you know, Lynn's, Sarah and I, we, you know, do a lot of, you know, forecasting, we look at, you know, what if and scenario analysis. You know, that's some of the fun stuff that we do and I get excited about it and hopefully they get excited about it. But if either one of them said, hey, for this rate window, for this timeframe, let's plug 38% in for our construction cost, I never would have believed it. You know, finance people call that a black swan event and Investopedia has a whole lot better explanation of what a black swan is than I could possibly provide. But I will say that had they said that to me, had they said, we're plugging 38% into construction cost, I would have been quietly sniffing their coffee cup, wondering what they were mixing into it because that's just so outside of what the historical norms present. And, and as our construction costs, they follow that index unfortunately. And it's not, and capital is a big driver, but as we look at this, this is, AWWA is our American Waterworks Association and, and you know, they're a professional organization. They just set the industry standards, they have a really great workshop on utility rate setting. And, and we shared this with us at the recent workshop, but that blue line, kind of in the middle, about the third one down, that's our CPI. And we often get questions, you know, well, why don't you link rates to CPI? And the bottom line is we can't because, now, we don't do garbage, but if you look at the green line, that's our water and sewer and we do do that and we're heavily involved in that. That water and sewer, the cost of providing that service, it's exceeding CPI and it's getting increasingly expensive. And as I mentioned, AWWA has a great workshop in that and I went, you know, again, I think Tom, again, 2005, 2007, I attended that for the first time, but I don't know how long I am for the world and I thought it'd be super beneficial for Lynn's and Sarah to attend that. And I said, hey guys, what's your plans in August for a week? And, and so we signed them up and we went to that workshop and it was really, really interesting. And I don't remember if it was Sean or Todd, but one of you guys said, hey, there's a lot of utilities in that room, said, who is anticipating no rate increases? And nobody raised their hand. And he said, which of you are anticipating double-digit rate increases? And he went, most of our hands went up. And, and that challenge that we have here, it's not just regional, it's not a Pacific Northwest thing. You know, there's West Coast utilities, there's East Coast utilities, and I think we even had these guys from Ghana? Yeah, and so even there, you know, they're struggling with the challenge of providing clean, safe drinking water and sanitary sewer, and sanitary sewer services that are treated to modern standards. It's getting expensive. So, that's the landscape, that's what's happening with utilities, why we're here tonight. What we're asking council to do is to approve a rate ordinance for what we have, we typically do rate windows in four-year increments. And we're asking you to approve that rate ordinance from '25 through '28. And what that's gonna do for us is gonna provide funding for our capital projects, it's gonna maintain appropriate levels of fund balance, we like to keep 90 days' operating cash, and it's gonna provide an assurance to our bondholders, because we use debt financing as a tool to smooth out rate increases, that we can meet our debt service obligations. And how do we know we're doing that? That gets fun, we benchmark it. And finance people, we get super excited about benchmarks. Now I know Mike Bailey, you guys, we're using Mike for some additional education on, you know, the budget and the budget process. I don't want to cover twice, but did you guys cover fund types at all? Okay, so Fund 401, we're an enterprise fund, it's self-supporting, and I won't go too deep in that because it sounds like Mike may have covered that with you. Oh my gosh, I remember when Mike was Finance Director. There can't be that many of us left that remember when Mike was Finance Director, Lori, me, Candy? But as money goes out, and again, our three cost centers, our capital, our labor, and O and M, as money goes out, I need to have a plan in place to put that money back. And how do we do that? Again, we benchmark it. So, cash funding of capital, there's rate funding of capital, or rate funding or cash funding, essentially the same thing, and there's debt financing. And we want to make sure that we're cash funding our capital, that we're using rate funding, and that amount is greater than or equal to our annual depreciation. If we're, if we're not using a certain amount of rate funding in capital, we're kind of like a household that is maybe using its Visa to pay its MasterCard and we don't want to be there. Bond coverage, we need to provide assurances to those people that buy our bonds that we have adequate reserves and adequate cash to cover that debt service coverage. And the bond covenants, as we read, and I think you guys have probably seen those, if you read through that packet and they're usually thick, 1.25 is the debt service coverage we're legally required to do. But as a policy, as a practice, we try to maintain 2.0 and that supports a higher bond rating and it supports a lower financing cost. I have, do I have? Previously had, maybe in my briefcase, but I have, the last time we went to Standard and Poor and we did a refunding issue and I think it was in the spring of 2003? And we were rated an AA+ and our outlook was held to be stable. And that's a really good spot to be in and that's something that I'm proud of, that me and the staff were able to deliver that. But an AA+ that goes out to the bond market? An AA+ that goes out to the bond market is gonna pay a much, much better rate than a BB-. And that's really where we want to be. And then ultimately, we talk about working capital and that working capital, we need to have 90 days of service revenues. And if we're doing that, we're probably doing pretty good. Ultimately, and again, capital, this, these rates, and as we look at that ordinance, capital's the biggest primary driver of it. And as Ryan talked through, we have these regulatory required projects. Combined sewer outflow, almost, if I say CSO, what I really mean is combined sewer outflow. When we have these weird rainfall events, it's a kind of a, you know, some people say it's climate change and, you know, some people say it's natural variability, but those pipes that we have in the north end, which is our combined area, they get full, they get full of rainwater, they get full of road runoff, and over time they overflow, that's called a combined sewer overflow. And the, the challenge with that, it's entirely regulatory-driven. We are operating under agreed-upon-order, required to satisfy agreed-upon-order. We told Department of Ecology, we will have this fixed by 2027. And it really applies to both sides of town. Port Gardner Storage Facility, we have to do that to keep water, you know, the CSO out of Port Gardner Bay on the west side of town. And we've got to do the 36th Street Combined Sewer Overflow Control on the east side of town to keep those same CSOs out of the Snohomish River. And, and under that, there's about 10, 12 individual projects a fit, but yeah, by way of a simple explanation, PGSF, we're repurposing the old KC Mill site, keep CSO out of Port Gardner Bay. And on 36th Street, we're doing that to keep CSOs out of Snohomish River. But ultimately, I think the takeaway that I'd like you to have, that regulatory requirement is huge and these projects are very expensive and we're required to do them. So, there are, there's two reasons we're gonna embark on capital projects. First one, we already covered, and that's regulatory requirement. And the second one, aging infrastructure. Utilities infrastructure doesn't last forever and I think, actually, Councilmember Vogel, Councilmembers Arlingo and our mayor, you attended the groundbreaking for Reservoir 3. And there, you know, we had a 100-year-old, you know, reservoir that was at the end of its useful life. And we'd done an interim emergency repair to keep, you know, the, the roof cap from collapsing, but it's still not seismically sound and we still have to do that. So, again, Reservoir 3, we extended the life, but the facility's still seismically volatile. And that's important because 540,000 people are tied into that reservoir and rely on that for the drinking water. And I think the department did a good job of managing that asset because we kept a 75-year asset in operation for 100 years. But ultimately, as Ryan said, if you build that thing with a horse and plow the first time, might be time to think about replacing it. And then Water Filtration Plant Phase 2, and we're doing some capital upgrades, we've got, we've got a 40-year-old mechanical systems in that plant. And have you guys got a chance to tour the WFP? Yeah, yeah, you should, it's super neat when you walk through the filter bay, it's like being inside a Brita filter. But the treatment chemicals, the same things that make our drinking water safe, they're caustic, they're corrosive, they're hard on equipment. And that plant processed over 19 billion gallons of water last year and those components are wearing out. So, we've covered some of it. Ultimately, Ryan and I call this our balancing act slide. If we look at that dark blue line, you know, that's our previously programmed CIP. And that is all of the program capital projects from our water, from our sewer and our storm range comprehensive plans, which, you know, we bring those to council, you guys adopt them. And, and buried in there is a whole list of projects.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna interject, Sean. And that's, that upper blue line is our regular capital program from our plans and the Port Gardner Storage Facility and these regulatory requirement projects combined.
And, and that's all, I mean, when we, when we plug that into our model and, and that, you know, produces the, here's the rates, here's the revenue requirement you need, we landed on what I call a BSN, that is a big scary number. And I went to Ryan and I said, Ryan, we've got a problem here and I'm really absolutely grateful for Ryan because we're able to look at that. As you look at the lighter blue line, our current proposed CIP, that addresses our regulatory required projects, the significant aging infrastructure projects that we talked about, and it moderates those rate increases. It's better prioritization, it's better portfolio management. And I am, I am especially grateful for this guy that said, that understood the nature of what we were hoping to do in terms of moderating the rate increases that we're bringing forward this evening. But I do want to say, in the interest of openness and honesty and transparency, this isn't a risk-free trade. And Councilmember Vogel, you made allusion to the pipes that we have in the ground, there's a lot of them. There's 42 miles of sewer pipe that's 75 years old and it's nearing the end of its service life. I mean, literally, if we put that outside of council chambers and start heading east and put it end to end, you get to Sky Comish. And that's the risk of the pipe that we have in the ground that's at the end of its life. But at the same time, you know, cutting the CIP in half to keep rate increases reasonable for the rate period, I absolutely support that. But those projects that are in that previously programmed CIP, we still need to be done. And deferring those projects, as Ryan said, it's a calculated risk to maintain that rate affordability for our customers, for our rate payers throughout the rate period, while we're burdened with the higher regulatory requirements, that CSO elimination or reduction. What's this mean for our rate payers? And again, water has much less pressure on rates. You know, we do water, we do sewer, we do surface water, they don't act in lockstep, they just don't. And, and that's a good thing because you can leverage one against the other, but there's, there's much less pressure on rates. As we look at Construction of Reservoir 3 and WFP Phase 2, those are absolutely driving rates, you know. But what we're gonna need between '24 and '25 is, you know, 6% in 25 basis points, 5% in 48 basis points. And then you can see in the out years, much, much more moderate rate increases. That's primarily because water started in a stronger financial position and throughout our rate window, it's just much less capital-intensive rate window. Then, we get to sewer and surface water and that's a much bigger lift than water and filtration. I've been doing this long enough that I get to see the rate pressure cyclical. When I put together this package in 2008, we were doing the Clearwell Number 2 project at the filter plant and that really drove our filtration rate, you know, and if you remember back in 2008, you know, housing market exploded and the economy was in the, CPI was relatively flat. But that was a time where our, our filtration rates were in, you know, nine and a half, nine and a quarter percent. And that was necessary to cover the construction cost of our Clearwell Number 2. And then we did this in wholesale, you know, in 2012, you know, we come back every four years and our, our wholesalers changed the delivery of water. And if you remember, we had a KC mill down at the waterfront, you know, they picked up and left town and that decreased the amount of water. They had a dedicated pipeline, it was 25 million gallons a day and we were doing good on the revenue there, good on the revenue. And that's, but you still have to capture that revenue and so that ended up driving water rates through that period. And then we got to 2016, the next time we came back and we'd had these rain and flood events and we looked at north, you know, north end basement flooding, we had to do a ton of stormwater separation. We built the Grand Avenue Park Bridge to do better conveyance during that period, but all of that rolled up to about a $72 million price tag. And so our sewer and our storm, it was already in a precarious position. And then, we had the Construction Cost Index do what it did. And so, again, we've got this conference, you know, we've got this, this conundrum where the CSO requirements are huge and the projects are expensive, there's not a discretionary component, and sewer was in a pretty precarious position and that's really driving these larger rates. So as we look at the combined rate impact, the moderate increases in water are helping to stabilize your overall combined rate impacts, you know, in total. And I think that's consistent with the majority of the municipal utilities that are just anticipating double-digit rate increases. And it's, in the life of our utility, we accumulated about 195 million in debt, so if you look at liabilities, there are books of 195 million in debt. As we do these projects that Ryan alluded to and, you know, and I've covered too, we're likely issuing that much in the next two years. So it's a super, super capital-intensive rate window. And truthfully, I'm kind of relieved these rate increases aren't larger and I think that speaks to the portfolio management that Ryan was able to assist with, or were able to defer some of those projects and keep those rates from actually being higher. This slide, I think it does a nice comparison, if you look at the blue and the light blue, what we're doing, we're stacking our water filtration and our sewer and surface water. And you can kind of get a nice visual there. Moderate rate increases in water, a little bit steeper rate increases in sewer and surface water, but we see a gradual rate increase throughout the rate window to maintain the financial solvency of the utility. And one of the things Sarah and Lynn did some great work on is, what is the other, what are the other guys doing? And so we look to the left, the red box, that's where we're currently at and where we're proposing to go in 2025. And some of these rates, you know, we look at our, you know, regional cities, some of these rates are 2024 rates and some of them are 2025 rates. I think Linwood, Seattle, and Dillingham were able to get the 25 rates. But I do think it's probably safe to assume those 24 rates reflected here are probably going up for 2025. And by the time we created this, I felt it was important to get the most accurate data that we could get. What's this mean in terms of impacts at the rate payer level? And again, I've seen this source twice. American Waterworks Association talks about a 4% threshold of affordability and, but I've also seen it in EPA documents too. But this accepted threshold, you know, accepted threshold affordability, industry-wide, is 4% of your median household income. And so, and you can see Everett current, Everett proposed, kind of broke that out in, in the red box there. in the red box there. We're currently below that, and fortunately, we're going to remain so during the rate period. So I think this-
Sean, I'm going to interject a little bit here. If you cycle back one slide there, you'll see that, you know, on the left, we're relatively low on a dollar value compared to some of these other cities, particularly like Bellevue and Seattle. But what the second slide does, go ahead, the other slide does, is that matches it to median income of the area, and so there you see the affordability is that, you know, the Bellevue rates are very high-
They're higher.
-but their median income of the community is high also. This balances that out so that you can see what it is, the affordability, on a median income of each community basis.
Yeah, and so I think, you know, despite that necessary reinvestment in capital, and it's a super aggressive capital schedule throughout this rate window, we, we really do remain one of the more affordable cities. And as, you know, Lynn and I looked at this, you know, we kind of developed the rates, and, you know, we came back, and I honestly don't remember if it was August or September, but sometime in August and September, we came to council with a low-income assistance program. We partnered with Catholic Community Services, and, and, and we looked at that, and we were able to expand the program eligibility to, you know, low-income and discount seniors. And then also, we're able to increase the maximum amount of assistance someone could qualify, because we really, we really, really do want to be affordable, it's something we're cognizant of. And I think that with this proposed rate structure, we really do remain affordable, and we're able to provide that safe, clean drinking water and sanitary sewer services, but at the same time, maintain the structural and the financial integrity of the utility. So, here's our proposed schedule. You know, we're here tonight, first reading of our ordinance, briefing the council. We'll be back next week, second reading of public hearing, take some time off for the holidays, and we'll be back here January 8th for a final reading, and we're asking action at that time. And then, we, we always have a notification period to our ratepayers, we like to give the utility bill, insert a postcard, and communicate that, hey, this is what's happening with the rates, and we're hoping to do that between January 8th and February 1st, and have those new rates in place February 1st. So at this point, I'd like to address any questions that you have.
Any questions? Councilmember Vogli.
I know it's super late, thank you all for being out here. I also really appreciate you calling out staff and that they're so awesome, so-
They're smarter than I am.
Well, whatever, that's fine, but just thank you for being here and giving us all that information, and it's really sad that you had to be after the stadium and, you know, whatever.
No, 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 I'm happy to be here.
But, so I don't actually have a question for you, I just, the comment is, thank you, and sorry to the ratepayers, but obviously, you've given us some good information to let us know why, and it's valuable, and it's a good history, and this is what our future is, so thank you.
I wish it were not so, but-
And really quickly, this has nothing to do with you, I wanted to tell PIPA that the, one of the screens is different than the rest, and you can come out and figure that out. Okay, thanks. It's backwards.
I knew you couldn't resist. Councilmember Zarlingo.
Well, of course, engineer to engineers, I'm interested in this stuff, and have been talking with Director SASS about this in the past to, to understand it more, and I very much appreciated the chance to tour both the water treatment plant and the, and the water pollution control facility and the water treatment plant. And that really did dramatize for me the, the point you made about vision and determination and foresight, that has helped us a lot, because we do have not only better quality water, but we aren't worried about future water service for the rest of the century, as far as I can tell, as so many other communities are. But on that score, then, one of the things, I'll comment, some of this briefing was at the, at the Built Environment Committee meeting on the 13th of November. So for anybody who wants more detail in this, on the City of Everett YouTube channel, the Built Environment Committee meeting in November 13th went over that. One of the things about that was the multiple millions of gallons of storage facility you need to temporarily handle that water so that it can be fed out later. As I understand it, then, one of the benefits we have that's pretty significant is the purchase of that Kimberly-Clark property and the water treatment facility they had and the holding cells there. So it sounds like this would be a lot more expensive had we not spent that money and gotten that facility back.
That, that big scary number gets to a really big scary number if you don't have access to that facility, because I don't know if Ryan, you know, when, when you were doing the site visit, you know, that deepwater outfall runs right under that facility, and so there is a, just a tremendous amount of value that we get from that abandoned industrial site.
And I think there was a project a couple of years ago, maybe it was for the deepwater outfall, where we needed on a very short basis to construct a pipeline through, I think it was Port property, if I remember that. So there's background to this that predates even this consideration.
Some of the, the Port Gardner Storage Facility program is more than a dozen projects, and some of them have already been completed, and that conveyance pipe through the port is one of those that will connect that drainage to this future facility that we'll be starting to build next year.
Well, the, the last thing, I guess I wanted to raise it, that the, in addition to the engineering nerdiness, there is the issue really of proper management, management of risk, careful stuff, trying to smooth these things out, and fairness to our ratepayers that we're doing the best we can with, with the funds that we have keeping those rates down. So I guess from my standpoint, I'll say that I've been digging into that, and I am. I'm, I'm gratified with the attention that's been paid, and I think that taking a little bit of risk and deferring some other projects to keep those rates as reasonable as we can, because they're really, they're a burden, is, is, is the best we can do.
No, absolutely, and I, I just kind of really appreciate Ryan, you know, when I said, this is kind of where we're at, boss, and I don't like this.
None of us do.
Yeah, and so, yeah, again, I do, do appreciate Ryan a lot.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, and on behalf of the council, we all appreciate you guys here. Thank you very much for the work you do, and thanks for the new acronym, BSN. We have a lot of those around here.
It's a big, it's a big scary number. It's a big scary number.
Okay, and we'll have a chance, and plenty more chance to answer more questions, thank you. Okay, we're moving on to item number 11, Council Bill 2412-42. First and second reading, adopt a ordinance establishing the basic salary schedule for employees of the City of Everett for 2025. Third and final reading will be December 18th, 2024. And welcome.
And I just want to add, this is, Candy's giving a very brief presentation, and then followed by questions, so.
Yeah, and also, thank you for the information in advance, appreciate that.
You're very welcome. Good evening, city council, late night. So tonight, I am here to provide a briefing on the salary ordinance, which establishes the wage schedule for all city employees. Final action for this item will be on the December 18th council agenda. The wage schedule for employees represented by EPOA, EPMA, and IFF was previously approved by city council as part of the collective bargaining process. AFSMI employees are currently voting on their successor agreement, and council action is expected on this agreement next Wednesday, December 18th. The wages included in the AFSMI collective bargaining agreement are in the ordinance before you, which is a 3.5% wage increase, broken down by a 2% COLA and a 1.5% market adjustment. We are still in negotiations with Crafts, our smallest union, and ATU. So the wages reflected in the ordinance are 2024 wages for those employees. To minimize compression issues, nonrepresented employees generally receive the same wage adjustment as AFSMI employees. Therefore, nonrepresented employees' salaries contained in this ordinance reflect a 2% COLA, and that will go into effect in January 1st, 2025. And then there will be, which is footnoted in the ordinance, a 1.5% market adjustment, which will go into effect July 1st, to equal that 3.5 that AFSMI is also receiving, but to reduce the expense on the city. That's why that July 1st date versus the full amount on January 1st. At this point, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. As Lori said, I'm keeping it pretty brief, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Councilmember Ryan.
Great, thank you. I feel like we maybe ask this question every year, but why are we doing a first and second reading tonight instead of like the full three-week schedule? And it seems like each year, the salary ordinance comes the week after we approve the budget, so the timing-wise always doesn't seem to line up, because we're approving a budget, and then we approve the salary ordinance. It feels like it should all be together.
Yeah, I, I agree, it would be better if we could do it earlier, and I think that the main reason why it's coming in so late this year is we were actually waiting for the AFSMI contract, so that we could include those wages in this ordinance, and because there's, there's voting laws under the AFSMI collective bylaws that they have to follow, so I, I pushed it out a little bit later so that we could, at least by the third reading, have it to where the AFSMI, I could bring the AFSMI contract next week, so that the timing of those two are actually lined up.
Okay, understood. And with the voluntary separations, have any of those positions been eliminated, or are they still included in this, but the positions are just vacant?
Yeah, as you know, in the salary ordinance, there are several classifications that don't have, that have vacant, that we have been vacant for several years. In fact, if you're looking, for example, the Rangers, right, I'm guessing that might be one that you're thinking about, that's actually a Ranger II, the majority of those Rangers are actually in the Ranger II classification, and we still use that classification in public works, so we can't eliminate that classification. The classifications are also listed in the AFSMI collective bargaining agreement, so we would have to negotiate to remove those as well. So we like to keep them in the salary schedule, just in case we want to bring them back at a later date. But yes, I do believe there will be several positions that were from employees that took the VSIP that will probably be eliminated permanently.
Okay. And then, last question's maybe adjacent to the salary ordinance, but how is it determined how many directors each department should have?
You know, it's really based on operational needs. Most departments, unless Lori, please correct me, I think that most departments only have one director, they may have more than one assistant director, but I'm, there's now, there's funding, I think maybe community development and planning, is that where you're, what you're thinking about? Because that's the only one where I know there's different divisions, if you might want to answer that one, Lori.
Yeah, well, I, the one I'm thinking of is that there is a communications director and an engagement director in the salary ordinance. That's the only other one that I can think of. Typically, it would be one per department.
Okay. Then why is that one department have two?
The, if you, you may recall that there, there was a point in time where we had a communications director and an engagement director, thinking that the workload involved with engagement required a separate director to run that division. Since that time, we, we have only one director, Nicole, our communications director, and the engagement director's not filled, as we're trying to combine and do more with less, so to speak, when it comes to our engagement and communications, so.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Councilmember Vogli.
I don't have questions right now, but I did have a question earlier, and I got an answer, yay! So my question was, well, I should just read it, or I won't. I received from Candy a list of the occupation codes that have been added, and also that have been deleted from the salary ordinance, and I'm happy that that has happened this year, and I asked the right question, and I got that. I haven't had a chance to really look at it, but I'm super glad that I have that, so thank you. I don't know if it went to all council, but I can certainly share that, or you can just-
I, I'm happy to share, I only provided it to you at this point, since you asked the question, but I'm happy to share that document.
And then, so I just wanted to say thank you, I'm going to try to figure out more questions about it for next week, because it's late, but, so, council colleagues, prepare to get that in your inbox, it's quite the read. Thank you, that's all I have right now.
Councilmember Bader.
Just a procedure question, do we need to do anything to approve this being the first and second reading, to compress that according to our procedures, or is?
No.
Nope. Thank, good question, thank you. All right, any other questions? Okay. Well, thank you for the brief presentation, and once again, providing all the information at our request.
Absolutely, and I'll send the information that Councilperson Vogli was talking about as well to all of you tomorrow. Thank you.
Thanks for hanging out with us tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, action item number 12, Council Bill 2411-33. Third and final reading, adopt a ordinance closing a special improvement project entitled Everett Smelter Drainage Fund 336, Program 028, as established by Ordinance Number 3872-22. Do I hear motion?
So moved.
Second. Any questions? Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Toohey?
Yes.
Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo?
Yes.
President Schwab?
Yes. Action item 13, Council Bill 2411-34. Third and final reading, adopt a ordinance closing a special improvement project entitled Grand Avenue Park Pedestrian Bridge Fund 303, Program 103, as established by Ordinance Number 3696-19. Do I hear motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
Questions? Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Toohey?
Yes.
Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogli?
Yes.
President Schwab?
Yes. Item number 14, Council Bill 2411-35. Third and final reading, adopt a ordinance closing a special improvements project entitled Port Gardner Bay Outlet Water Quality Treatment retrofit fund 336, Program 019, as established by Ordinance Number 3807-21. Do I hear motion?
So move.
Second.
Motion and second, any question? Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Toohey?
Yes.
Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogli?
Yes.
President Schwab?
Yes. Item number 15, Council Bill 2411-36. Third and final reading, adopt an ordinance closing a special improvement project entitled WFP Portal Four Improvements Fund 336, Program 018, as established by Ordinance Number 3894-22.
So move.
Second.
Motion and second, any questions? Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Toohey?
Yes.
Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogli?
Yes.
President Schwab?
Yes. Item number 16, Council Bill 2411-37. Third and final reading, adopt a ordinance closing special improvement project entitled WPCF Bar Screens Upgrades Fund 336, Program 027, as established by Ordinance Number 3947-23. Do I hear motion?
So move.
Second.
Any questions? Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmember Toohey?
Yes.
Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Yes.
Vice President Zarlingo?
Yes.
Councilmember Vogli?
Yes.
President Schwab?
Yes. Item number 17, Council Bill 2411-38. Third and final reading, adopt a ordinance granting a special improvement project entitled